In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required indicating that this work session regular meeting would take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 22, 2024.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilwoman Kimberly Francois.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there is to be peace in the world, there must be peace in the nations. If there is to be peace in the nations, there must be peace in the cities. If there is to be peace in the cities, there must be peace between neighbors. If there is to be peace between neighbors, there must be peace in the home. If there is to be peace in the home, there must be peace in the heart. Amen.
Madam Master Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson, Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Councilman Carrasi, Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Present.
Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Councilman Wright.
So next would be commendations and proclamations. I think they, some people may be in a public safety meeting, particularly Councilman Embarrasson. So we're going to hold that until after public discussion.
Move we open to public discussion?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. We're open for public discussion. People may come up once for five minutes. No yielding of time. Please state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak? That was quite a ballet there. No, go ahead. You're okay. Okay, the mic's not, hang on, the mic's not on. The mic's not on. He'll turn it on. No, we want to record it.
Okay. Carol Peterson, 12 Lake Avenue in Somerset. I'm here again tonight, asked, and a lot of people aren't here, but we really need the laws enforced. In your district, Mr. Wright, Mrs. Francois, you don't live far from us, and the idling of trucks that are now being allowed to park on hill and lake need to stop. I mean, I'm tired of, after even more than six months having my brain rattled out, awakened at night, I have a decibel level in my house with windows, doors closed, of eighty to ninety sometimes. I've called the police. The police have tried to do their best, but as they say, as soon as they see a police car, they turn them off. There's people coming and going all night long, mainly around two o'clock in the morning, because you hear their big mouths, too. You don't understand what they're speaking, but you know they're there. And I think it's time, since we have ordinances, and there's one family that's moved in, that as the neighbors who aren't here are calling the junk hole, because they have so much stuff lying around. Mr. Wright, I hope you come out in the daytime. Mrs. Francois, I hope you do, too, just to take a look. God forbid if we ever have another hurricane or strong winds, because everybody around them is going to lose something from their house. And I think that it's gone on too long. Why are they trafficking all night long? Why are people coming and going all night long, mostly men with backpacks? And I think the worst thing that's happened to us is over the Labor Day weekend when we had family from Florida visiting, and we got together on Sunday, from Sunday morning church till about three o'clock in the afternoon, came home, and the neighbor at Ten Lake had taken out our bushes, taken out some of our trees, dug big holes, filled them with concrete, put in two-by-twos, and had half a fence up. Didn't tell us they were doing it. Yes, the fence is on their side at the end of the street, but it butts right in with our fence. We have just had another survey done. I'm waiting for the results, but I think it's time that somebody put this man in his place, because he seems to be dominating the area but not obeying the laws. And there's two things I learned a long time ago, and I've tried to practice. One, no pollution, because pollution is hard on your health, and when you are in your bedroom at night trying to sleep, not only the noise that can affect your hearing, but the pollution that you start coughing, you can't breathe, you've got the windows closed, but it's still coming in. And then, thank God, he burned so much one night that we had two fire trucks when we called the police, and an ambulance, and a policeman, and they talked to him seriously, because we've had a long dry spell, and burning outside haphazardly equals fire, not only in his property, but everybody else's as well. So I'm asking you, please to intervene. And then the last thing is when you go to people working for the township, and they treat you like dirt, and tell you, "You sue them. You sue them. They're not my laws they're breaking. They're your laws they're breaking," except for the fence, and that will be discussed at some other time with a lawyer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Debbie Stewart, 2 Farrington Plaza. That's a very sad story that lady just told us, and I hope you all can help her out. And I would like to thank the council, the mayor, and councilpeople for considering this nuisance amendment. I think it's very important. As you know, studies have shown noise pollution can cause stress, sleep disturbance, hearing loss, cardiovascular disease, cognitive impairment, and mental health issues. And we applaud you all for addressing that in the ordinance that you will be reading tonight. I was wondering, though, if you could answer, does that also, I read it, but maybe I missed it, include very loud vehicles and very loud motorcycles? Is there any way to address that? The other thing, then, I always bring up, and I don't know where Mr. Von Lucker is, but Mettler's Road, I would love to see from Weston Road all the way out to Amwell, Mettler's Road, become 35 miles per hour. It's 40, and then it goes to 35 near Colonial Park, but I really think 35 would be a better number for that particular stretch of the road. And I also want to thank again for whoever is insisting that the developers along Schoolhouse Road maintain the sidewalks. They're wonderful. I see families, people, walking up and down that stretch now all the time, and it's really been a great addition. I know recently you had, I guess it was the developer, was told they had to cut back the growth that was along the sidewalk, and that looks very nice now, and I guess they're going to be taking care of that. I just want to make sure, because people in my community Canal Walk had asked, is that for bicycles also? I think Mr. Von Lucker said that was a multi-use sidewalk, you know, as long as bikes aren't flying too fast. So if anybody can answer that, that would be good, and thank you again.
Anyone else?
Okay, Jim Johnston, 34, Norwich Place. I want to talk about the upcoming election. I was at the Somerset, okay, I was at the Somerset County Commissioner debate last month. I was there. This was a debate between the two Democrat incumbents, Chanel Robinson and Sarah Soy, and the two Republican challengers, Nick Cuso and Rocky Ganta. It was a very interesting debate, very lively debate. Mr. Mayor, you were there, Councilman Ram, and Councilwoman Udine, and Assemblyman Joe Danielson was there. It was a very good debate, but there was just one problem. It was not broad, there was no broadcast. There was no video, no televised broadcast. So there was just 30 people in the room who heard the debate, just the 30 of us in the room. And it seems to me that a debate, that the purpose of a debate is to allow the voters to see the candidates, how well they perform in the debates, so they can decide who they're going to vote for. But if this debate was not broadcast to the general public, all the thousands of voters in Franklin and Somerset County could not see the debate, that the debate was not kept, it was not made public. So my question is, I mean, I'm not trying to lay the blame on anybody, but I'm just saying that whoever was in charge of running the debate, I would hope that next time they have, you know, that they broadcast it so everyone can see it. The debate was right here in Franklin, and there was no news coverage, all right? So I just wanted to say that. But I want to make a few comments of what happened in the debate. Chanel Robinson made a couple of statements that I disagree with. She said that, one thing she said, that in her opinion warehouses are not a county issue. They are strictly a local issue. And then Rocky Ganta responded, he made the point that they are a county issue, because for one thing, the truck traffic can spill over into neighboring towns. And a good example of that would be the warehouse that's going up right now on Elizabeth Avenue, next to the Elizabeth Avenue School. Have you seen that? There's a, the new warehouse, it's about, it's a 437,000 square foot warehouse, right next, or right near Elizabeth Avenue School. It's a, okay, and as she also said, she made a comment about preserving open space, but there's a lot, we're losing open space here in Franklin. We found out that there's a new application that just came in for 15 new housing, new houses on Cedar Grove Lane, across the street from the 32 houses that are currently being built on Cedar Grove Lane. And these are, they haven't been approved yet, but they're, but more and more applications keep coming in for more housing developments, for more warehouses. All right, so, okay, so, but otherwise, it was a good debate, and I hope that, you know, they can, you know, I don't know. But anyway, yeah, it was a good debate, and thank, those of you who were there, thank you for being there. And, okay, so, thanks, thank you.
Do I have to yield his time? I don't know what the rule is, because you didn't say next person. Okay. Benjamin Guy, 35, Patton Drive. So just real quick, October 26 is this weekend, so I just want to say trunk or treat is going to be on Hamilton Street this week. So anybody can tell a friend to tell a friend, bring your kids out, and make sure that you're coming out to have a good time during this weekend at all. So it's going to be 12 to 3, 12 to 4 on Hamilton Street. You should see the signs right by the firehouse at all, so just want to let everybody know that. Second portion is that because it came up in a conversation that we had at the Hamilton Street, well, it's going to come up by the Hamilton Street Board, and I want to know, because we're going to go into budget requests going into next year, the conversation about Hamilton Street and the streetscapes that's going to be going on, because I know Vasanella had brought this up about things that were going on with other committees actually supporting additions that are going on. It was a great job by the Open Space Committee to actually do the shrubbery and the trees that are on the street.
Shade Tree Commission.
Shade Tree, sorry. Clarification. So again, just for, you know, for that going forward, we just want to talk about what's the plan for the streetscape, because we had a conversation with a couple of county officials, and we wanted to see whether or not there was a proposal going out for the actual streetscape that's going on. If it is, can that be forwarded to the Hamilton Street Board so we can evaluate what's going on, so we can make a proposal back to the town on whether or not we're going to be proposing a Sid tax, because we want to stay within budget for next year at all. So if there is a plan, and there's something else that you want to do that the town is recommending, please forward that to us so that we can actually look at that going forward at all. About the election portion, I just want to make sure that if somebody from the town council just says before this meeting, because this will be the last meeting prior to elections, something about where the polls are going to be, and if there's going to be any, like, information, because a lot of people watch these meetings afterwards, about, you know, where the election stuff is going to be done for, that's going to be in the town, where poll locations and everything else, just for informational stuff. Or if it's going to be on the website, please direct them exactly where the poll location's going to be, because that will be a conversation that comes up after this meeting, saying they don't know. So I'm just making sure that you're pointing that out before this meeting is over. All right? One of the things that you're going to be coming up with today, I think it's October 22, for ordinance reading, that's going to come up, I think it's 4456-24, which has to do with the cannabis regulations that you're actually doing. Again, I would table this conversation. This is my opinion, because, again, because of the conversation that happened pretty much from you guys, from the last meeting, at the end of the meeting, and given this open public, and it being that it's right before the election, I would table this until after election season, to actually have this open conversation and try to vote on all your ordinance. The reason why is because the State Department still has to figure out a formula based on what they're doing for taxation and going stuff going forward, and I don't think it's hitting the way it needs to be done. So preempting and doing, making a decision in an ordinance to actually do something, I don't think you should actually do. Now, the conversation you had about Hamilton Street, I think that is well-reversed, and it shouldn't be just concentrated on one area. But I do think you should have a conversation, you should not be permitting and making a business decision for free market society. That is my opinion on it. So again, I will say that as we go along. I know that the state screwed you. I'm going to be very clear about that. The state screwed you, but that should be taken up with your assembly people and your senators, and you guys should write a letter about that, and make them back you, and make them give you some more tax money on the back end of it. I mean, specifically Joe Danielson, Egan, and everybody else that's in this area. You guys should write a letter to them, because they did screw you. But again, do not punish the citizens of this society for something that the state screwed you on. That is not punishment that you should give down to local residents and business people. Just like you're hearing about these warehouses, it's not fair to other people, to economic people that are driving this economy. All right? So that is that. Additionally, for workforce development portion, like I'm going to keep bringing this up, you guys had this conversation. I want to see what support you're going to do after this year with workforce, because it was something that was talked about. We need action. We have a problem in this community. We have a problem with getting these people jobs. Johnny's over there in the corner. He'll always say it every year, every time he comes up here. There's nothing done by this town council to back what he's been saying for the last 10 years. Nothing. That is a problem. You need to act, and you need to get something done. That means, Ram, you need to meet with Johnny every week for the next two weeks and get something done, because again, Johnny's going to keep saying the same thing. And until you solve the problem, it's going to keep getting created. And I'm going to back him on that conversation. That is the one thing I back Johnny on. Again, thank you very much.
Jan Brant, 22 Bryant Court. Just have a couple questions and things to ask about, and I know a couple weeks ago I had asked about the traffic report and when there's going to be the meeting with the input from the community. One thing that I was reading, I guess it happened a couple weeks ago, around October 16, there was a fatal crash on Amwell Road in South Middlebush, and when I was reading about it in the newspaper, the one thing that I read that surprised me was that it said this is the fifth fatal car crash for Franklin Township for this year. And so, you know, just, I'm really happy that you all are doing this traffic report, but it just seems to be that, I know a couple weeks ago, the public was supposed to have a meeting, and there's supposed to be input, and it just seems like things are just not moving along with this traffic report. And when you're having, you know, people dying, this was a dad who, there was a head-on crash on Amwell Road, then there was another crash, I think it was Weston Canal Road. I don't know where the other five fatal crashes, car crashes, were for 2024, but this is really, you know, we have a small community, and to read about things, you know, and we know that with all the new development we're having in our community, and all the buildings and whatnot, things that are making, just, things are more dangerous for us to drive in our cars in, you know, Franklin Township, and that worries me. So I hope you all could give me some answers of when that next meeting is, and I hope that that's moving along quickly, because, you know, people are dying in the meantime. And what's interesting also, when I was trying to do a search to find out where the other car crashes, the fatal car crashes in Franklin Township are, just so that you all know, it's, you know, lawyers are online, you know, saying, hey, listen, you know, if you've been in a car crash in Franklin Township, you know, with all the new development and whatnot, there might be liabilities. So I hope that this traffic report will help the flow and create answers so that people aren't dying, you know, from the traffic in Franklin Township. The other thing I wanted to ask about was, I heard that the ordinances that Franklin Township had for the warehouse ordinance and the noise ordinance, and also the stormwater ordinance, I heard that they're coming up in December, the different, I guess warehouses and things like that are suing the council and all. And so I think it would be good for the public, I was trying to do a search on when these ordinances are coming up, that people are challenging, that you put into place, so it might be good for the community to know when these are going to be heard. I heard it's going to be in Hunterton County, Somerset, that these, so if you all know when those ordinances are, I don't know if it helps for public to be there to hear, you know, people trying to overturn the ordinances that you all put in place, but, you know, you might want some public presence, and you might want to advertise this in Franklin Township, so people know that all these ordinances that you had put into place to protect people are coming up for people that are suing, you know, the council and trying to turn these ordinances over. So I know I wasn't able to find out when these dates are, but I heard that Judge Menon is hearing these cases in December. So if you all could share those, or at a future time, share those. And that's, and also, and thank you for the new noise ordinance. It seems like it's, I know in the past, I have, just like the first woman who came up that spoke about noise, I know in the past, when I've called the Somerset County Health Department, you know, there was really nobody to come out to measure the sound and to do anything about that, and it sounds like you all are doing things to put into place so that, you know, people can have a good night's sleep and have this being more reportable, where action can be taken when people are doing things that they shouldn't be doing. So thank you.
I'm Ellen Rubin, Stone Manor Drive, right here in this town. I wanted to bring up something that really, none of us here are certainly not, has direct control over, however, I thought it was important that both the members of the council and the residents are aware of it, so that we could make our voices heard, hopefully, in this particular matter. It has to do with a charter school, a small charter school in Newark. The administrator, the president, the administrator, the superintendent, and the, somebody who is high up in the administrative staff of this school, our husband and wife, and they're living in Coral Gables, Florida. I'm sure you could all imagine why that might be. Florida does not have a state tax, and that's, and it is known that that is the reason why they're there. And there is a law, there is a law about that. That is not legal. It is not legal, and from what I read, we're trying to do something about it, but my feeling is that if there is something going on in the state that is illegal, unethical, we should bring it up as individuals. We should bring it up with our state officials. They're making, between the two of them, both of them, $600,000 a year. And we all know that school districts throughout the state, of course, require quite a bit of money, and other school districts, including, of course, our own, would ultimately be impacted by any additional money, or money that flows out of state, which shouldn't, which shouldn't. Certainly, that's warrants some state income taxes, $600,000 between two people. And obviously, this is sort of rolling around among the powers and wondering exactly what they can or should do, but there are others who have started to do this as well. I am familiar only with this particular couple. And if you want more precise information about names, I'd be happy to email it. I didn't take it with me. And people who are looking to do something similar, and there are, would certainly be looking around to see if, whether there was any consequences that this, that this couple receives. So I'm hoping that all of us could take note of this and spend a little bit of time discussing things with, you know, our representatives, who have always, certainly I've been up to Wayne DeScalfi's office for our assemblyman Joe Daniels, very, very responsive. I haven't spoken to him about this. I thought that I'd come here and hopefully speak to a nice group here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amina Courey, 1483 Lincoln Highway in DeCure. I'm here to discuss, sorry, ordinance S2, S3235. That's to ban intoxicating hemp products from being sold in Franklin Township. Right now, like most cannabis dispensaries, like we have a problem, because we're...
Ma'am, let me interrupt you just for a second. You can speak now if you want. There is, if you're talking about the cannabis...
No, she's not mayor. She's talking about the state law that was adopted banning hemp products.
Oh, the state law. Excuse me for interrupting, and just give her like another 20 seconds before you start the clock. Go ahead, I apologize.
No, it's fine. Like cannabis dispensaries, we're already struggling in a competitive market, and with these smoke shops and gas stations allowed to sell the intoxicating hemp products, we have to compete with stuff that's not even, it's not tested. It's not real cannabis either. It's synthetic cannabis that people think that is real cannabis. There are crazy side effects. You have seizures, like not forget, seizures, paranoia that comes with using some of these products. Also, like you guys don't even get any of the state tax revenue from these dispensaries, these, people selling these intoxicating hemp products. Also, there needs to be a little bit more awareness and education with the bill, because you have, like, the issue right now, you have children going into these gas stations, going into these smoke shops. They're not 21, they're not getting IDed, and they're able to purchase this stuff. And then they get sick off of it, and when they get sick off of it, they're saying it's cannabis, but it really isn't cannabis. Another thing I'd like to talk about is the amount of dispensaries that are allowed to open in Franklin Township. There's like 22, I think 22 or 25 dispensaries that have been allowed to be opened. However, Franklin Township is only, what, 56,000 residents? And it's like, we are already competing with each other. All these dispensaries are already on top of each other, so like, it's kind of a struggle for us, and for me, I can speak for myself, I'm not even open yet. So it's like, the competition is already there, there's going to be more competition coming, and we're competing with... There's going to be more competition coming, and we're competing with other dispensaries. We're competing with the smoke shops. So I just feel that it's really not fair, especially for us who've done it the right way and us who've, like, gotten our license, gotten the permits, went, and it's taken us this long. I just feel that maybe you should consider changing things, so the people that have done it the right way, we at least have a fighting chance. And that's it. Thank you.
Again, anyone else here for cannabis? You're allowed to speak at this point, but it does have its own separate meeting.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shawnee. I'm from Leaf House, also cannabis dispensary. I agree with the, I guess, fellow dispensary owner.
Address?
Address. 900 Eastern Avenue in Somerset, New Jersey. So we're having, we're also struggling as well, like the fellow dispensary owner is saying, they're not even open and they're afraid to come in. We are open and we're struggling. We negative since we've been open and people think that we, money probably coming from the skies, which, which is not. So we need your help. I mean, to give out 24, 25 licenses or 18 being approved, I mean, imagine if you guys saying, because there are 18 liquor stores, now what, we're going to have 18 police stations, 18 fire department, 18 hospitals, that's why we should have 18 cannabis stores? That doesn't make any sense. I mean, for people, for us to come in and invest millions, I'm not, it's not even hundreds of thousands, we're talking about millions, several millions into dispensary to come in and, and just for, for the town to say, well, let the stronger survive? I mean, what kind of town does that? I thought the town was supposed to help the residents, help the people, because we're here to create jobs. And all we asking for, just put the limit on the cap. I mean, other town is 45,000 residents and they only have two and it's capped. Why would you have 25 licenses? You are setting up everyone for failure. I mean, how will it look if everyone will shut down and then we're all going to go to the state? And how is it going to affect you as a town? That people are actually here sitting and doing nothing. You're setting everyone up for failure, honestly. So I would really appreciate if you guys reconsider, regroup and do something about it. I mean, it's impossible to, to work for, for the past two years, not receive any paycheck. I mean, how would you, I mean, do you, you guys get paid every week? I want to get paid as well. I want to at least get my money back so I can leave this town, because this town is not supportive. Also, we would also request for the town to, to take steps to, to crack down on illicit shops. Because right now, not only we competing with other, we don't even have competition. What's there to compete? There are no, no really clients. And then for us to compete on top of it to smoke shops and deli stores and other grocery shops that sell illicit cannabis, I mean, why we being so, I mean, regulated in, on state side, on town side, we get violations after violations, while everybody, illegal stores, they get to do whatever they want? I mean, at the end of the day, we're talking about these Somerset residents, there are children, there are families, I'm also a mother, I have, I don't want my child to get sick from illicit drugs if they're going to buy from the, they don't even check IDs. Next door to me, they sell illicit drug, like, I don't know, cannabis, they, they sell it hemp, but it's not. And everyone can walk in, even children. So if you care about the children of Somerset residents, please do something about it. Honestly, I don't even know what, I'm pleading. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. Rob Peterson, 66 Wilson Road. So it's very interesting to hear some of the comments from the dispensaries that are here. And I guess you're going to have a special meeting, but I really hope that you guys would recall that I actually spoke in front of you, probably a little over a year ago, maybe, two years ago, I don't remember exactly. And I said, you guys are rushing into this, you're not even thinking it through. And I questioned why you had 36 or 38, you know, applications pending. And I was told, oh, no, we're, the state's never going to grant us more than six or seven, never going to happen. Well, okay, well, here we are now. And, you know, you guys made us the weed, the weed capital of Somerset County, so congratulations. I just want to hope that you're not going to go out of your way now to, to start rescuing businesses. What about the struggling pizza parlor? What about the struggling, you know, daycare center? They're also regulated, aren't they? So you're going to start bailing these, these businesses out? Doesn't make any sense to me. I feel for you. I feel for all the people that are, that are business owners. But this is the council that you're dealing with. So, sorry it's come to that, but you, you guys rushed into it. You, you were gleeful. You were beyond, beyond gleeful to get that tax money. This is what you've got.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Nicholson. I am the Chair of the New Jersey Cannabis Equity Association, along with the New Jersey Cannabis Trade Association. I'm also the CEO and owner of Holistic Solutions, which was the first black-owned majority medical to then transition to adult-use store in the great state of New Jersey. I am not a resident. I'm here on the behalf of operators in your community by bringing comments specifically to intoxicating hemp. I want to first say thank you. You did something that many towns were reluctant to do. You passed an ordinance that allowed regulated cannabis in your community. By passing such ordinance, you've benefited and will benefit from a 2% community host fee. But by way of passing of the bill S3235, the governor has acted and requested that any intoxicating hemp product that is sold in a non-regulated dispensary, which would mean a dispensary authorized by the state, which is the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, is deemed illegal. During this moment of pause, municipalities have a great opportunity of looking to pass ordinances that would impact such businesses. I am here by way of offering support. Previously, I've worked for state government for 24-plus years, leading governments' employee litigations, as well as reformative initiatives. This is not going to be an easy measure, and we need to have consensus, as you heard from your own community, in how we move forward. But we are here offering support, because the action and time is now. These illicit products are being sold in our communities. They are being sold to our children. There is no gatekeeping, there is no age gating that is occurring in many of these facilities. And by way of not malice or intention, they themselves have found themselves to provide a product that is in the gray market, illegal but not legal. And based on that opportunity, they continue to break the law. They continue to dishonor what you have done is by providing a regulated market in a structured framework. They pay no regulated taxes to your community. You get no benefit. But I believe that we have a great opportunity of working cooperatively together to change that, to bring these businesses into fold and for you to get the well-deserved tax money that you so desire. Many of these tax dollars are benefiting community and residents. I'm not here to speak on your cap sizes, but I'm here to make sure that your residents and citizens are not getting access to illegal cannabis that is really a detriment to your community. More importantly, working with your municipality and law enforcement is a wonderful opportunity by holding meetings within your districts, talking about resolutions, and also inviting these businesses into the conversation. A way of changing something is by providing regulation and enforcement. Enforcement actions are something that the municipalities have leverage over. In the law, what a wonderful opportunity, you get to keep all of those tax dollars on any fines, levies and revocations. And that also applies to the business landowners and owners. Again, there's lots of opportunity here, as well as these products are being sold in liquor stores. Cannabis is being sold in liquor stores in your community. That's not what you intended. That's not the will of the council or the will by mayor. That's not what you wanted. It is time to look at potentially going in a new direction, and we are here to offer support. I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Shawnee Tibbs, 25 Parkside Street. 80 years.
Mr. Tibbs, if you're going to give anything to us, give it to the clerk. Mr. Tibbs, please go back to the microphone. Go ahead. Go ahead.
First of all, you a Democrat? 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 Uh, he didn't want to answer. You, I don't blame you. You the Democrat? You a Democrat? You a Democrat? For the people that's in this...
Address the council.
I look right at you. For the people that's in this meeting here, I want you to understand, this is the election time. Do you know what mega means? Do you know what mega means? There is a mega Republican philosophy called mega. It's M-E-G-A, right? Help me out, y'all. Help me out. You know what I'm talking about? It's been flowing over top of Franklin Township for the past seven years. You know where it's coming from. There's people here, first of all, Mr. Lawyer, there's two things I want to do. Of course, I asked you one time before that, you know, they, they have hacked my phones. I'm a third phone, they still didn't hack that one too. It's coming out of the IT department here in Franklin Township. Okay? That's supposed to be against the law. Secondly, what was the other thing against the law? Oh, I want to, I want to pro, pro bono to stop the law for building warehouses in Franklin Township for industry. I need the people in, in this town, the industry to come in so we have somewhere to train our kids, to go, to go somewhere to work. We don't need nobody in this town to stop industry, the industry from coming in this town. If pro bono or whatever it takes for a law, that's what they say, one person, I'm making that order now, to you, sir, whatever it takes. Secondly, in turn, the people here with the cannabis stuff, baby, they want y'all to fight. They don't care nothing about you. I ain't going to say they, there's particular people, they don't care nothing about you. They want you to fight. Ain't about the laws and, and the cannabis, who, they want, that's why they got it all down in the black community, because they want y'all to kill each other. That's what the point of, the point of mega philosophy is, is divide you and to make you, tell you to kill each other. That's the point of the mega Republican philosophy. And there's people in the council has been spewing that for the past seven years. Until you understand that factor, you will not understand anything else. I know what it is. I've been here 80 years, that's why I know everybody on the council. I've been here before y'all even think about being the council, you know that. And I love everybody. I love, you know, but I'm a black man and I try to look out for my young black kids. You got me between a rock and a hard place. You know what's going on, and you sit up there and let it accept it. You know what's going on. Don't let one man and one person rule you for doing something wrong. At one time, this was the fifth best place to live in in this whole country, number five. I was a part of that whole unit, me and people down in Parkside, all the area down there. We were the fifth best in the country. We still here. Bob, what about Boilock? I'm going to, I tell him. You know, he has a policy not to hire no black kids in Franklin Township. That's been a policy for this administration.
The gentleman's time has expired.
Yeah, I know, but I ain't expired yet.
That's a good thing.
I'm going to have to respect the mayor, so from now on, y'all understand what I'm saying.
The gentleman's time has expired.
Yeah, right.
Ellen, Ellen Orogen, 9 Republic Road, Somerset, New Jersey. I just wanted to talk to, about the traffic study. And I know that, that road canal by Hooters, 287, that that is a county, I guess, a county road and a state intersection, but it does affect the people of Franklin. So as I was going this morning at nine o'clock down that road towards 287, there was a whole bunch of trucks on the shoulder, opposite Hooters, a little bit up from Hooters. There was three trucks and a cab on the shoulder of the road. And I don't know if this is illegal, but I remember when I was traveling to work on 287 North, there was a whole bunch of trucks on the shoulder of the roads there on 287. And the state at one time said it was illegal for all these trucks to be on the shoulder of the road. I don't know if that's still the law, that the trucks can't be on interstates and on roads. But I don't understand, and I'm addressing this through the traffic study, and I will write it to, in the traffic study, send it to an email, but I don't understand why all these trucks are allowed to be on the shoulder of the road and pulling in and pulling out, causing all, all these problems. And I'd just like to know that one question, is that illegal? And are we being, is Franklin Township monitoring this situation for its, the good of its community to be able to travel freely on that road without having all those trucks on that intersection? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Seeing no one further, I move you to close public comment at this time.
Second.
All in favor of closing public comments, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. Wow, that's a lot of subjects. First of all, for the cannabis, while you didn't want to wait until the cannabis portion of the meeting where there's going to be, have its own public discussion, I'm going to wait to answer those questions then and ask other council members to consider adhering to that. Truck idling, Mrs. Peterson has left. It's been repeated to her many, many times. When it happens, she needs to call the police then. And that's true of many things that we hear all the time. People have issues and they're legitimate issues, and they come to a council meeting about it. There's nothing we can do to a truck driver that's idling his truck four days ago. So please, call the police, you're not bothering them. If they're busy with other things, they know how to prioritize it. So please, call the police when it's happening. As far as Mettler's Road speed limit, speed limits are set, are, we don't just decide on a speed limit. Speed limits are set by doing a traffic study and then measuring the speed of various cars and taking, I believe it's the 85th percentile of that speed, and that's the speed that the road will get attributed to it. You have to be careful about that, because if it's a 35 mile an hour road and most people are traveling at 40 miles an hour, that means it gets changed to 40 miles an hour. But I will talk to Mr. Vornlocker about considering a study on that road. Canal Walk sidewalks, did you want to answer that?
Yes, may I?
Yes, yes.
Perfect. So there has been a lot of residential emails regarding the schoolhouse, Canal Walk Boulevard, Mettler's Road, grass weeds overgrowth. And I just want you to know that... to know that that has been taken care by Summerfield HOA. We have had discussion, and I want to thank the township manager for following up and making sure that it has been done. Um, I've walked, I've gone that way myself. I know, um, Mr. Dominic was sitting on behalf of Mr. Vornlocker, has also received some messages for me to go check some of the additional, um, overgrowth concerns out. So currently, that's been done. Um, we will continue to monitor that situation, um, and I want to thank all the residents that have sent to me emails. Um, some of you guys have also gone ahead and sent pictures around that, so thank you, um, for letting us know. So, um, this has been taken care.
The debate at Canal Walk, um, government is not in charge of broadcasting debates. You should talk to the people who put on that debate. I, I, I wouldn't want government meddling in that. It was open to the general public. They did do that, and I wish more people had gone. Polling locations, can you, uh, Madam Clerk, can you say where on the website that's available?
If you go to the township clerk's page, there's a, an elections link that gives you all the information.
Yeah, and there's thirteen different places. I, I don't wanna take the time to list them all, but you're gonna get sample ballots pretty soon.
Being mailed out, um, tomorrow.
So, that'll be listed there. Um, the lawsuits.
Mr. Mayor, there's no, the only thing that's scheduled right now in those lawsuits, and by the way, there are a series of lawsuits, it's, I believe it's twelve or thirteen, challenging both of, actually, three, four of the ordinances that were adopted with regards with storm, water, noise, and the two zoning ordinances. Uh, they've generally been consolidated, and the only thing that's on for December fourth is a case management conference, which is for the lawyers to get together and talk about dates, and so there's no, nothing substantive going on at this point in time.
I thought January fourteenth, there was B-9.
So that's, that's the one that's different, right? So the B-9 is just the appeal from the, uh, B-9 has a challenge to the ordinances that my office is handling. Um, the other B-9 challenge is, is just the trial on the.
Planning board.
On the challenge to the denial. So that, that may be on in, in January. My office isn't handling that. That's being handled by the planning board attorney.
It's January fourteenth in Huntington? Go ahead.
Yes, yes. And, and Mayor, just so you know, the reason that it's in Huntington is New Jersey's, um, courts are not split up into counties. They're split up into vicinages. And Huntington County and, um, Somerset County are both in the same vicinages, and, um, judge, uh, the judge on the, that's been assigned these cases just sits in Flemington.
Could you comment about the role of the public in such a thing?
There's none.
I, I am intending to go to it. I actually moved my clinic because of it. Um, but I don't know that a judge is going to be impressed by a room full of people. And certainly clapping or something, it's not a council meeting. Would you agree?
Correct. It's not a popularity contest. It's, uh, court proceedings. But of course, anybody who would like to go to see, if you're, if you're interested, is free to go, subject to the availability of seating. You know, most courtrooms aren't that big, but no, it doesn't matter. I don't want the public to think, oh, if they don't show up, that somehow the judge is gonna be influenced one way or the other, 'cause there's nobody there.
As far as traffic crashes, I'm a little reluctant to answer, because I know things that are not open to the general public. But a lot of the crashes are, some of the crashes are single vehicle. Running stop signs. Another crash is believed to be someone falling asleep. Um, I don't know that there, I don't know that anyone here, I don't know if you're up on this or not, but are there crashes due to road configuration?
Probably not something we should talk about.
Right. Thank you.
Good question. Probably a liability issue.
Yeah, thank you. Cannabis will hold off. Dates of trial.
Mr. Mayor, there, there are two other questions.
Go ahead.
One, one in regard to the BI traffic report. We just recently had the most steering committee met. Probably within the next three to four weeks, we'll have another public session. And that'll, it'll be notified. It'll be on the website, so the public will have input. It is moving along. We've started discussing the framework for a master plan amendment and a zoning ordinance that's going together with the traffic report. The other question was, it is a dual-use walkway. Bicycles are allowed?
The question about the trucks parking, was that on Weston Road or on 287? So we have cars parking overnight? Trucks parking?
If, if, as the mayor mentioned before, if, if you see anything that you believe is legal, illegal, call, you call the police, and they will dispatch someone. The, the trucks cannot park on our shoulders. If they break down, they break down. But that's why you call the police, and the police will investigate, and if they are parked illegally, they will get ticketed.
So Franklin Police will handle Weston Road. I, I asked you a question, and we can't continue a conversation. No, that, that's okay. That's okay. Yeah, I, I know, but other people will complain to me that I'm not letting them talk. The, do you wanna say more about the state law intoxication?
No, only Mayor, that it is a, it's a state law that was adopted. I'm, I'm not, I, I wasn't quite sure that I caught the drift of, um, the comments to the council. It's a state law. Um, I believe that there is currently a lawsuit that's challenged it. I'm not sure if it's currently being enforced. Um, but, um, but at, at this point. I don't think, right now, I think there's an injunction against it being enforced, and we're not the ones that enforce it. It's enforced by the state, I believe. Um, so I'm not sure that we're, we're even the one. And I, I am fairly certain that there's a lawsuit that has, that has stayed the enforcement of it at this point in time. And remember, the state law itself had a period of time in it where it wasn't going to be enforced. So, um, I, I, I honestly, I didn't, I wasn't prepared for that question, but I can certainly let the council know.
Okay. Um, did anyone else have comments?
I, I do have, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanna respond a little bit to Mr. Tibbs. First of all, thank you for loving us, Mr. Tibbs. We love you too, just to make sure that you know that. Um, you know, we live in an amazing township. We have over seventy languages spoken in school. We have over seventy houses worship in the township. And we always pride ourselves for being the second most diverse community in New Jersey. And our principle has been, and will continue to be, to create an environment that everyone who calls Franklin home feels respected and valued. So just remember that. This is a township that we love. I lived here for thirty-eight years. There are a lot of good things happening in the township. Honestly, from, if you look at it, people are coming together to eradicate the, the food insecurity. We are working in many ways to provide health care for our students, our community members. And also, there are a lot of efforts to create jobs. So please, be proud of where we live in. This is a beautiful township. I have seen the growth. Yes, we have challenges, but I bet if those that they looked at that made our Franklin Township to be the fifth best place to, to live, if they come, they will find out that this is really maybe better than the fifth. Maybe it will be second, third. That's why a lot of people would like, would love to come and live in Franklin Township. But more importantly, we respect one another, we live together, support each other, value each other's culture, and value each other's contribution to the township. So I just wanted to mention that comment.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to add on the BI, um, master plan study. So the October ninth meeting, um, I know Councilman Barson was, um, part of the steering committee. Um, the minutes to that meeting hasn't been posted. He already notified Mark, um, so that will be posted shortly, and then once it's posted, I will also circulate that back out, um, to the community folks that's seen it. Um, I'll socialize it out to some of the key members, and then I'll put it out as well. Um, so you can see it in a couple days. Probably it'll take, um, to load those minutes up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor?
So I just wanted to respond to Guy's comment, specifically addressed to me, about workforce training in, in town. One of the things that we have been saying is that, uh, we are, that's one of, not a core function of the council. Uh, if there's an opportunity to collaborate with, uh, other organizations, such as Board of Education, or, uh, RBCC, or any other, um, place that are going to bring jobs into town, we are certainly willing to help them with that. But to create an infrastructure to provide workforce training at the expense of the council is, is not why you all elected us. You know, we are here to provide services, and I think workforce training, it, it addresses a, a small segment of the people. We can be all things to all people all the time. So whenever there's an opportunity presents itself, we are jumping into that opportunity and helping the residents. When we had a program with the, our funds to help the residents that needed some additional training, we set that all up, but there are very, very few takers, handful of them. Um, so that was not something that was, I guess, required by the people. Earlier this year, Councilwoman Francois brought in a program in collaboration with the Franklin Board of Education. Uh, so some of the leftover funds from the R money was assigned to that training, about three hundred thousand, three hundred plus thousand dollars. That program is going on, training about twenty-plus, uh, youth, high school students, and, and, and drop, dropouts, and that's going on. So that's a limited opportunity. When there were funds available, we do do that kind of a thing. But to expect the council to set up a, a full infrastructure to provide ongoing training is a very expensive proposition. That's not our core mission. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that we are not ignoring that population or the need for the training, but there's only so much money to go around to programs like that. I think that one of the previous meetings, I asked to, uh, asked for a show of hands, how many people would like one or two percent increase in your taxes to provide workforce training to the people here, and I saw none. So, um, so I just wanted to respond to Guy. Uh, I think he sometimes asks questions and leaves. Um, I'm sorry about that, but. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Real quick, Mayor, I just wanted, oh, were you going, Deputy Mayor?
Nope.
Oh. Um, we're doing a lot of studies, so I just was wondering if there's a way, meaning traffic studies, there's, uh, a public meeting coming up that has to do with Easton Avenue, which actually has two. One for Devon Intersection, which will be constructed in a few years, and a long-term one. Is there a way, maybe we can just put online this, the, uh, because there's two studies with Hamilton Street right now having to do with traffic. One we're doing, we just hired last week, uh, expert, then the county and federal government's working on one. Maybe we could put on the, uh, website, the active studies, if there's a schedule, 'cause I think there's one coming up in a community center. I don't know, our acting manager, Mr. Dominic, may know. I don't know if that's the one that we're doing, or, or the county's doing, but maybe we can put this online, because there literally are at least four studies going on that have to do with traffic in Franklin. So I know.
You want the meeting, the meeting dates put up on the website?
Well, or just something that could just very simply study A, study B, study C, study, and who's sponsoring it, and if there is a meeting, and if there's a website, you know, something just very straightforward, because it's all good stuff, but I think some of it's getting a little lost in the shuffle. Is Mayor?
It's a reasonable point.
Could we, and I don't wanna.
The answer is yes. We, we can do that.
Put it on the clerk, but, or whoever it is, between the manager's office, or clerk's office, planning office.
We can do it.
Office, we.
Okay. Just very matter-of-fact, 'cause I, I want people, there's, there's, these public sessions are specifically for people to get involved, and if they know ahead of time, sometimes they can get documents or plans, uh, you know, if they're published. Sometimes you go that night, but whatever. But there are a lot of good studies going on, and, um, hopefully they'll prove very valuable going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It's a good idea. Moving on, um, or moving back, uh, we had to skip accommodations and proclamations, so Councilman Barson, Hindu Heritage Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, uh, this is an annual proclamation that we do worldwide. Um, this month, October, is celebrated as a Hindu Heritage Month. Uh, so I apologize for my friends who are here for being late to the meeting. Uh, we had a public safety committee meeting, so we got delayed, uh, so I couldn't make it here on time. Uh, so let me read the proclamation today. "Whereas Franklin Township is proud of its rich cultural history and the many people who call our township home, and whereas Franklin Township is home to a vibrant Hindu community, and whereas Hindu Americans have made significant contributions across all fields, including science, education, medicine, law, politics, business, culture, sports, and more, and whereas Hindu heritage, culture, traditions, and values have enriched our great township, and whereas during the month of October, every year, the Hindu community across the state of New Jersey and across our nation will collectively celebrate Hindu Heritage, and whereas Hindu Heritage Month provides an opportunity to focus on Hindu culture and its diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India. Now therefore, we, Raman Barson, Councilman, and Philip Kramer, Mayor, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing every October as Hindu Heritage Month. Thank you for coming. I invite my friends here to accept the proclamation."
Do I get to talk for a few minutes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, Dr. Phil Kramer, as I would like to call him, we are very proud to have a medical doctor, a healthcare profession, leading our great town. Uh, Deputy Mayor Ram, and all of the council members, we appreciate that. My name is Dev Karlekar. I'm a resident of Seven Julie Court, Somerset, New Jersey. I'm a proud resident, citizen of this great nation for the last twenty-five years. As a person, immigrant person with a dual heritage, that is from India, coming to the USA, one, USA being the oldest democracy, and second. USA, one, USA being the oldest democracy, and second, India, which is the largest democracy, hosting 1.5 billion people, over 850 million people voting, so I have a great privilege of having this dual heritage. What I would like to say is, that means the whole world is one family. I appreciate Ms. Kimberly Francoise, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer talking about well-being for all of us. I have made few notes, and I'm gonna read that for you all. As a resident of Franklin Township, as a small business owner, most of us are. Lalwaniji is a CPA, Sharmaji is an IT technocrat, Hemendra Bhayashogby, working in a healthcare pharmaceutical industries. So we are about 1%, 1.5% of the United States population-wise, contributing over 7% to the GDP. Ram briefly talked about the contribution, whether it's an IT entrepreneurship, whether it's a healthcare, doctors, lawyers, you name it. The highest educated startup of the people in terms of the ethnicity, the highest in terms of the GDP, the lowest in crime. That's music to hear for most of the ethnicities, law-abiding citizens, follows the laws, contributes to the community, pays the taxes, or more taxes, as most of us are entrepreneurs. So diversity is very similar. This country thrives on diversity. We say, our thoughts is, we all came from different part of the world. Something similar, when you talk about India, which has most of these, you know, religious minorities of global world residing amicably for the last 10,000 years. Hinduism is the oldest surviving religion across the world, dating back to over 10,000 years. Finally, we appreciate this opportunity, it means a lot. We are over 1.5 billion Indian living and migrated across all the world. This means a lot to us. It's an election time. Voting is our civic right, irrespective of party affiliation. The least I would like to say is to vote and put our country on the right track. We are the greatest country in the world. There is a reason why most of us are first generation immigrant. We came to this country for the betterment of our life, for the betterment of our family. We would like to keep it the same way, so keep up the good work. I appreciate all of you doing the great job, and, you know, God bless us all. Thank you so much.
Just a shout out to Dave Karlecker's daughter. Mayor and I have visited his house to meet his daughter, who's a nice girl, very bright girl. Her, at that age, she has decided that she wanted to be a doctor, just like our mayor. And she has been working, my daughter is a doctor, so I have had her, talked to her as well, a neurologist, same as our mayor. Now, I just learned that she just aced SAT, 1,800 in perfect score.
Wow.
So congrats to her, big shout out, and good luck on her college.
That's amazing. And I didn't decide to go to med school till I was 27. Thank you. Okay, we're on to council comments.
Mr. Mayor, could I, I think I could move this down, move this along real quick, because I would have answers for some questions that fellow council members might ask, okay?
Okay, I'm nervous, but go ahead.
Don't you just love it? Well, a couple things come up, and I sort of want to nip them real quick. Someone talked about a traffic study. Well, there are a couple of traffic studies out there. Mine has nothing to do with them. Mine is strictly from Franklin Boulevard till the end of the township on Hamilton Street. Mine does not consist of anyone walking along the street, I mean, or the sidewalk or anything. It's specifically designed to find out how cars are moving out of the buildings, left, right, is it hazardous, down in front of Johns Plaza? What happens if the kids want to cross the street? What type of movement will happen with the additional cars that come out on Hamilton Street? So I don't want this confused with anybody else's study. It's specifically what I just told you. Councilman Vasanella brought up some other stuff, can't talk about it. Mine, this is what it is. I brought it up to the township manager, we voted on just that section for traffic study. My next thing. You're gonna look this one. Okay, affordable housing. Our numbers just came out for affordable housing. Fourth round, everybody's gonna get affordable housing. Based on the population of the town, we're gonna get hit. Now, we have affordable housing here in Franklin Township, a lot of it, but we're gonna need some more. And I want to make sure that the affordable housing that does come in fits in the right location. Now, Councilwoman Francois and I are on the redevelopment agency, and we realized how hard it is to bring in affordable housing. So that's a challenge that we're gonna look forward to. Now, on your consent agenda, you'll see that we hired, will hire, someone to do just that, affordable housing, a consultant, and he will help us with that process. Instead of us coming out of a back pocket trying to figure it out, they're gonna figure it out and be concise, give us a report, and we can move forward. It's gonna take a little bit, but we're gonna know how it is. Councilman Ram brought up a very good issue, social action projects per se, and how do you deal with them? Well, as he said, you know, if you want us to throw a couple of tax dollars out there, fine, but my suggestion, and someone said, we ran out, oh, he left, because I wanted to address his comment, will he nearly? Yes, we did rush. Well, I know, I did, so I can't speak for the rest, because I wanted the tax dollars. And I wanted the tax dollars for social action programs, because sometimes somebody's gonna say, why are you funding a bus to Raritan Valley with my money? You see, they're gonna point at themselves because it's their money. Why are we doing that? Why are we doing a training program with my money? Everybody's got that, okay? Not in my backyard is what they say, that's what they're gonna say. Now, my fellow council members, it's not a whole lot of money at first. My fellow council members, some might say they want it in the treasury, some might say, eh, we'll give you a little piece of that. I want it all. I'm greedy, I want it all, because this is found money. And as found money, I want to use it for just that, social action programs. That's the only way we're gonna get them in town, and that's the way I want it, bring the money in. So that's my little bug on that. Now, we're gonna move on to cannabis. Everybody has an issue with cannabis, and on your.
Mr. Wright, would you mind holding that until we have the cannabis ordinance?
Okay, I'll hold that for the cannabis. What else do I have to bring up? Social action programs I did, housing I did, and, oh, come out to Hamilton Street on the 26th of this month, on a Saturday. We're gonna have a lot of fun. The street, as it's called, has provided for everyone to come out. We have some vendors to come out. I come, I just might wear the clown costume this year, I doubt it, but we want everybody to come out and have a good time. So that means old and young, come on out and hang out with us. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll hold my comments, as you say, for the cannabis until we come up with that piece of pie.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Adine.
Thank you. Just a couple things I want to hit on. I've been receiving some requests on replacing traditional signages on New Brunswick Road, so that is something that is being looked up by our Public Works as well as our Public Safety Department, and I might have a status for you guys. If it's done sooner, you'll get to know otherwise by the next council meeting, we should have some information about that. And I know Mr. Bronelocker's not here today, but I wanted to check on the cameras, status on the cameras from our last meeting, having those at the traffic lights, I believe, in certain streets. We already addressed the schoolhouse, Summerfields HOA, we also spoke about the BI Master Plan Study. I did started to receive, so it, we're starting to kick off on the 2025 road paving schedule. I know there's been some emails already coming through around if there, if that street is, you know, if their particular street is ready for paving. So we do have a third-party vendor that goes through grading the streets, and each year we have a certain amount of funds that is allocated to pave the roads, and then it's bid to a particular paving company. So that's more to come. We're starting to meet now in Public Works, and as the meetings start forming, it will be made available, the 2025 road paving schedule. I also was part of a fire prevention meeting a couple, last week, and just want to report there has been a grant that was received to purchase some equipments. I will provide more information on those on the next council meeting. What I did want to kind of hit up on is something that our Public Safety Director mentioned at the last meeting around Register Ready Program. I have circulated that to a lot of the folks, and it's basically a program that is to enroll for individuals who may need assistance in a disaster. I have circulated to folks in Canal Walk, all the adult communities, and the link to that, to register to that is www-registerready nj.gov, and the number is 877-652-1148. If anyone needs any information on that, please feel free to register, reach out to me, and I can give you the information, but we definitely want that number up, because I think we may have individuals that would need assistance in a disaster, and we don't want to wait last minute to have that information ready. And then the other thing I did want to ask about, Mr. Dominic may have the answer to this, is I know November 6th, there was a planning board meeting, and I've been asked to give a follow-up as that, if that particular agenda has been formed for that particular annex, if you can let us know when it's the turn, if that meeting's still scheduled, or if that's been moved to a further timing. That's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Vasanella.
Most of the items have been addressed. We have the trunk or treat this Saturday on Hamilton Street. Myself, Councilman Ram, and Councilman Karazi, actually, our acting manager of tonight, Mr. Dominic and our attorney, were a few minutes late to this meeting. We literally were across the hall in our public safety meeting. Since it's a new item, not gonna get into a lot of the details, but we were reviewing, most of the meeting was focused on reviewing our fire response needs, capabilities, and how to balance that going forward. And there's some options on the table, since it's in its infancy, I'm not gonna get into those details, but we want to be ahead of the curve and make sure we're suited townshipwide to deal with our fire response needs. So there'll be more to come on that, lots of facts and figures, and a lot of little details to decide or to review before make decisions, policy decisions related to that. Oh, I don't, Mr. Raynon, is it public information, the numbers that came out on affordable housing, by the way?
Yes.
So, yeah, I thought it was, I just want to make sure I wasn't saying something I wasn't supposed to. Yeah, it came out and.
Councilman, can I, can I just say something about it?
Yeah, sure, of course.
And I just, if the mayor allows me, everybody is saying, well, the affordable housing numbers are out and we're done, so that's our number. The law changed in New Jersey. The numbers that were published by the DCA are advisory-only, they're not binding on anybody. The numbers for each municipality are going to be established by that municipality by resolution, nullated in January 31st of next year. So when everybody says, well, our number is X, and now we're gonna have to bill all of this affordable housing, the answer is, we don't know, we just got that number, the same day that the public got it, the municipalities got it, and all of the background data, we're in the process of analyzing it. What our ultimate number is, is the number that the township determines, is the number based upon the guidelines that are in the state statute, and with the guidance of the DCA number. So I just wanted everybody, I, I think that there is, I think people are seeing this the same way they, they saw the third round, which is, by the way, maybe the second round, because the third round got screwed up too, is that this is not a circumstance where like a judge ruled yesterday that this is our number. This is just a preliminary step in a process that starts really next year.
And I appreciate you jumping in, because you said that much more eloquently than I could have, and what I was going to kind of say in my own words was, we got a number, but one of, and I've been through this now, this the third time dealing with this, this process. Hopefully it'll be better than the last two, because it was very convoluted and a lot of delays and lawsuits, but bottom line, the number's just over 700, but like Mr. Raynon said, it's very important, that's one of the reasons we hire experts, because they flush through everything, and there's units that we probably have that qualify for.
Councilman, once again, I'm gonna say, and I think that you're, you're about to give an analysis of the last two times, and that's not what.
But we have an expert that will review, what I'm saying.
This is, but what I'm saying is the process, you said you went, went through the process twice, twice before, this is not the process, it's a completely different process. In the last two rounds, in round two and in the beginning of round three, DCA published a number that was your number. That's not what happened last Friday. What happened last Friday is DCA put out a number that is a non-binding number, and it is advisory. The determination as to the actual number is gonna be based upon a resolution passed by the council next year. So when you, you're about to, you, you started to explain the process that was last time's process, that's not what this process is, it's completely different.
Well, but, but I guess the point I was making, and tell me, please explain if this is off, but the township, that number isn't a rock-hard number that the township does review, we're choosing to use an expert, and that number, well, could change in any direction, but we're hopeful, and we'll see if it changes to what we passed that resolution, our number may be lower.
And as I said, it's just, it's a completely different process. Yes, you know, those numbers were announced, and, and I don't think, I didn't see if there was a press release released with it, but they were just simply, it was kind of like a data dump, that's all it was. But if you were involved, and, and, you know, it's a complicated process, and it's a completely new process, it's just a different process. In, in, before, we would go through it, and then we would start to figure out how it is we were gonna meet that number, and that's the process you are beginning to describe. That's not where we are in this process. That part of the process is not gonna happen until a year from now.
So would it be correct to say that that number, people should not put too much into that number, because we don't know what our number we're gonna pass is?
I think I pretty much, I.
Correct.
Yes.
I guess that's the main point, that people shouldn't be glued to that number.
Correct.
The process will play out.
Yes.
And we'll see what we actually come up with.
Correct.
For obligation.
Exactly.
No, that's, that's.
I heard the bell go off, I thought my time was up.
Thank you, thank you for explaining.
All of our time is up.
Bob yielded me his time.
Oh, that's what it is.
Councilwoman Francois.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let, let me just be clear, the trunk or treat event is this Saturday, October 26th, from 12:00 to 3:00 at Johns Plaza. And then after that, we have our youth center at 429 Lewis Street, is also a free Halloween party, and that's from 5:00 to 8:00 for the youth. So there are two events coming up this Saturday, and I know we've all been talking about the Halloween, 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 but we never said where these events were gonna be. On Hamilton Street at Johns Plaza, trunk or treat, 12:00 to 3:00. 429 Lewis Street, the youth center Halloween party, free for all youth, ages nine to 20, at the youth center, from 5:00 to 8:00.
You say sugar high?
Sugar High, yes, Sugar High. And I'll have my costume on, too. Okay, I did want to say, Diwali was a very, very, very nice event. Thank you for organizing that, Councilman Rahm. It was a beautiful event, like it was the last couple of years. And I look forward to it again next year. And thank you for the invite. And also, yes, please, 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 everybody, exercise your right to vote on November 5. Our democracy is at stake. We have the best country in the world. And it's very important for people to make the right decision for our future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Embarrassan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I went through a couple of points already. Just to reinforce the workforce training component of it, we had a follow-up meeting with the Franklin Board of Education as well as RVCC on the 17th. Because we have a facility on Route 27 at the Board of Education building. We have classrooms that are available to do any sort of training courses or programs. So we are honing in on a couple of ideas, not completely fixed. But I think there's a collaboration between the two educational institutions. Hopefully, we will see some workforce training programs, especially in the medical field because of the proximity of many hospitals nearby as well as doctors' offices. So I think RVCC is going to put that together as well as we talked about some other far credit courses as well. So stay tuned. We are trying our, our best to bring these programs to, to town. But it's not entirely in our hands. We are trying to leverage our facilities at no charge to the college. And we are hoping that there'll be a support from the public to take those courses. And there's two other meetings I attended, the Greater Raton Valley Board, Workforce Development Board meeting. And of course, the Master Plan Re-Exam that Vince kindly gave an update on. When the minutes are up, everybody would get to see what was discussed. More to come on that. And I think the last meeting was supposed to be a public meeting, but that was rescheduled to later in November, November 14. Is that, is that what he said? One of, sometime in November. So that'll be rescheduled. And then you will have a chance to come and attend that and give your input on the traffic study. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Oni Jaka.
Okay, Mayor. Yes, the mayor, I was, I was honored to be at the meeting yesterday. The meeting that we held at East Millstone. The meeting was very, very interesting and important to Ted Ward and the entire Franklin. The meeting was more on speed control and how to reduce accident in Franklin. Our Public Safety Director and her team, they were all there. They were able to answer questions and actually direct, direct the meeting and made it categorically clear how to reduce accidents. They suggested that the consequences of this accident is by issuing tickets. They brought issues and its processes of controlling the speed, including humps, installing cameras, which is not permitted in New Jersey. So the director and their team promised to step up in speed control and reduce accident in Franklin. So, Mayor, that is what I have here.
Thank you. Councilman Karazi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the Advisory Board of Health meeting. And I'd like to make a few announcements about the health-related matters. The first one is that National Prescription Drug Takeback Day is this Saturday, October 26, at the Police Department, at the Public Safety Department. And it is from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And residents can drop off the medication they do not need. Also, please note that they do not accept syringes, sharps, items, and illicit drugs. Liquid products such as cough syrup should remain sealed in their original container. And in addition, I'm happy to let you know that the Advisory Board of Health has arranged for residents to get a free naloxone. Anybody who wishes, they can have a free box. November 12, the Somerset Health Department will have free, will offer free flu and COVID vaccination at the food bank, which is located at Churchill Avenue. And there's another important event that's going to happen in our community senior center is going to be on November 20. This is for anybody who has a teenage. This is a great event. It's called Our Turn to Talk. And it's a documentary and discussion. This is because of the high level of anxiety and stress and impacts of all kinds of sort of things on our teenagers, which affected their mental health. They're coming forward to talk about their experience and basically be stigma-free. So we are inviting or encouraging everybody who has a teenager to please attend. I'm sure you will learn something that might help your teenager as well. Human Relations Meeting Commission meeting is tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. across the hall. And there will be a presentation on dealing with mental health issues stigma-free. Also, October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. And as you may know, cybercrime is a huge problem for organizations and also individuals. And I'd like to share a couple of statistics so you can appreciate the extent of the problem. 25 billion passwords and usernames are available on the dark web and marketplaces. Probably many of them or many of us have our password and usernames out there. And cybercrime is projected to cost $9.5 trillion, not billion, not million, trillion dollars in 2024, and that may increase to about 10 and a half trillion. And 62% of breaches were as a result of stolen credentials. So what can we do as citizens, as community members? Everybody is recommending two things, which will really help to protect our credentials and avoid identity theft. That is, to make sure that you have a strong password. And second is to have at least two-factor authentication. You know, most of us probably do. If you don't, please consider having that. So somebody will text you on your phone or some other email so you confirm, confirm that indeed that's the, the actual person or bank or whatever they want, you wanted to, to reach out. Also, along with Councilman Rahm, we participated in a great gala by Center for Great Expectation. If you're not familiar, this is just an amazing nonprofit organization in our town, which was established about 26 years ago. And they help so many women in need of support. And they have actually free information session for anybody who wishes to learn more about them. They are located on 19B Dalewood Avenue in Somerset. And this free session or information session is going to be on November 7. So look it up for them, the Great Expectation, Center for Great Expectation. And you will be amazed, the type of services that they provide and to the residents of our township in need. And by the way, Joe Danielson, our Assemblyman Joe Danielson, was honored during that gala and the champion of change. So we congratulate Joe again, and we are proud of him to have our Assemblyman. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Two things. One, I want to wish everyone a happy Halloween. It's a fun holiday, but remember to be safe as well. If you're expecting trick-or-treaters, leave your light on. If you don't want anyone, shut the light off. Make sure your children are wearing safe costumes and they're looking both way and ways when crossing streets, crossing at crosswalks, all the safety features and precautions. It's been a little while since we really did this because of the pandemic. We've done it like last year and maybe a little bit the year before. So maybe this is like year two. So just, you know, go back to our old school days and help make sure the next generation has a safe and, you know, fun Halloween season. Interestingly, it's also a Polish Holloway called Dzide, which is like an All Saints Day, which runs October 31st to November 1st, which also coincides with Diwali, which is darkness being beat out by light. So I don't know what that means in the universe, have all those three holidays at once. But here in Franklin, I'm sure we have folks celebrating all of them and rightfully so. Also, voting, Election Day is coming up. But you can vote as early as now with vote by mail. So you can request those ballots. You can also vote in person starting this Saturday. In-person voting is from Saturday the 28th through November 3rd from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. right here at the Senior Center. So that's available. Anyone in Franklin Township can go to that location and vote early. And then, of course, on Election Day, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at your polling place, which will be on your sample ballot. And of course, you can check the registry through New Jersey Votes. I think exactly what it is, NV Votes or some NJV Vote, whatever. And it'll, it'll tell your voting location. Lots of ways to vote, no excuse not to. It's really important. And maybe in the spirit of Diwali, we can make sure that lightness beats out darkness. Thank you.
Thank you for my comments. It's really, really dry out there. In fact, the only day it's rained in the last two and a half months was on Franklin Day.
That's true.
So please be careful with ignition sources, cigarette butts, cannabis butts. It's just, you could start one hell of a fire. So please be careful. And then the last thing I have to say is vote. Mr. Dominic.
Just two quick things in response to Councilwoman Udine's request. The, the Onyx Planning Board application for the warehouse has been continued to January 15. They just admitted revised plans. They have not been reviewed yet. So they did not have enough time for us, for them to make the originally scheduled November meeting. So January 15 here at 7:30. The other thing is Bob's procedure went very well. He's home resting, hopefully not watching this, but...
Yeah, 50/50 on that. Hi, Bob.
Knowing him, he is.
Okay. We're now on to council discussion items. There are none. Approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for approval. The Township Council Work Session Regular Meeting of September 10th and September 24th. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion, any changes? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella. Councilman Wright.
Approval of the warrants in the amount of $17,146,697.81 on October 22, 2024, presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
I move the warrants be paid as read.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Anyone want to pull one? Question one. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Next item, number 13. For those following on the agenda, there's copies of the agenda up there. Public hearing and adoption on second ordinance, of ordinances on second reading. So there's a first reading to announce to the world that we're considering an ordinance and a second reading where we consider passing it. And the public gets to speak at that, at the second reading. So for second readings, ordinance 4453-24, an ordinance to acquire by donation certain lands within the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, for the purpose of open space preservation in the Township of Franklin pursuant to NJSA 4812A for the property known as Franklin Fields LP, property located at 140 Copper Mine Road, Block 11.01, Lot 62, is presented to Township Council for final hearing and adoption. For public hearing and final adoption, the public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public on this item only.
Mayor, seeing no one coming forward, a motion closed the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Have a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Public hearing is closed on this item. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. This is just what it says, donation of land. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance number 4454-24, capital ordinance providing for the acquisition by donation for the purpose of open space preservation for property known as Franklin Fields LP, property located at 140 Copper Mine Road, also known as Block 11.01, Lot 62, and appropriating $23,500 there from the Open Space Trust Fund of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, to pay for the costs thereof is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. We're open to the public on this item only.
Seeing no one coming forward, Mayor, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing on the ordinance.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on the, on the, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So this is to pay the bills of like the assessor, et cetera, to accept property. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 445524, an amend the amendments code of Township Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 226, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 226-13, Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets. We're adding a portion of Oakbrook Place in front of the Sewage Authority building, not the main building. A pump station is presented for the public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item.
Seeing no one coming forward in this item, Mayor, a motion closed the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance 4456-24, an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, with a new Chapter 92, Cannabis Regulating Retail Cannabis Dispensaries, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public on this item only. Same rules as before.
So I'm here, Ram, so I was on the phone. So if you want to talk about something, you can talk about it right now. But specifically, like I said before, um, the cannabis portion, and I'm going to be real clear, uh, real clear about, uh, why this needs to be moved out and not be done now.
Name and address.
Benjamin Guy, it was already recorded before, Benjamin Guy 35 Patton Drive. It was already recorded previously. So again, it needs to be moved out because of some fact is an open market. Again, you don't know what the state and you don't know what the regulations, you don't know what the taxes is, you don't know what the workforce is, and you don't know how to get impacted in the community. So again, if you're going to cut something off for financial reasons at this specific timeframe. Now, the regulation that you're actually, that you should put in portion is that where they should be at. It should be spread out around the county, around the town itself. It should be spread out in each one of the, each one of the, uh, the awards specifically so that the growth can be actually be there. You don't need to cut off the revenue stream. It's a difference. Now, that's the, the problem is that you got screwed by the state. I'm going to keep saying the same thing over because I want the state to hear it. Because just in case they're doing it, because again, it's causing you guys problems for regulating, tax-wise and everything else. That was, that, you accepted it in the beginning. You got a assembly person to back you because he was on the, he was on the subcommittee to do it. So what's the problem? Work it out. Work it out with the state. Now, you guys should bring in state people to help you mandate and regulate this stuff because the state is still rep, slapping some of the business owners with regulations, what they got to do. You're hearing the problems that they're going through. You're not, you're not helping the problems. You're not hurt, you're not, you're not even having subcommittees to have, to have the conversation about it to use as a funnel for what can be done as a, as a good behavior. You guys can be a beacon of a success if you embrace it. The problem is, is that you're rejecting it early without embracing it and actually getting ahead of it. The problem is, is that you, you're, you're being, you're being, uh, what's the name, retroactive rather than proactive about the approach. You knew this was coming because we had this conversation multiple times about this. This was had on the Hamilton Street board multiple times. So multiple council people were aware of this. So it's nothing that was not known already, right? The problem is, is that how you handle economic benefits for the society that you actually govern. That is what this real problem is about. You have no real plan on how to reach your community. This is just a pilot example of how you do it because you have no state representatives that are here advocating for this. You have community members complaining. This is a problem. Just like your housing problems, everything else that's going on. There's a problem in this area. And it's repetitive. When do you guys stop? Just reflect and say, we did something wrong. We did it. And have a discussion with yourselves about how you're going to handle it going forward at all. When do you take accountability? That is the only thing I ever ask about you guys. Just taking accountability about stuff that you already, you already governed and you said you accepted. The economics values was already pretty, pretty much set by Ed Petosnik last meeting. Saying everybody else around is not doing it. We're doing it. So why are you not embracing that? Why are you not, why are you not challenging to saying, hey, look, listen, we're the people that's going to be, be the leaders of this? I don't understand. What you want to do is you want to put an ordinance in place and reg, and regulate it and do it. You couldn't stop the warehouses. It's already done. So economics-wise, you gotta, you gotta embrace this. It's coming in here. There's 41 applications. We said this in the last meeting when we, when we had this conversation before. It was 41 applications that came through here. We had that conversation through the Hamilton Street Board multiple times. Nobody embraced it and said, oh, we're going to make a subcommittee just to research and study and see whatnot these people are going to pass and get through this. Nobody stepped up and do that. Nobody had a conversation about anything about proactive about being it. Didn't have a conversation with any of the counterparts in the county support, whether that was New Jersey EDA or anybody else to support anything of growth and, and actually maximizing the benefits here. We just let it retroactively happen. And then we want to put an ordinance in there and say, hey, look, well, we're in trouble now. We got about 18 and norking them and not having as much as success as everybody else. Not their problems. It's our township problem. So why are we not embracing, embracing what we have as far as economic success and actually embracing what we can do? Now, on Hamilton Street, I'll speak for me personally, it's too much. The reason why it's too much is because of smoke shops there. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not knocking the smoke shops because they got to do what they got to do too. But it just that it's not regulated. It's not, it's not commonly placed in talking about it can be a green gateway. See, it's a simple conversation how you can actually have, solve a simple problem by having a simple conversation economically. We're not having that. We're regulating and it's causing a problem. So I say you stop or think about it, go get a state assessment, just like we do with railways or anything else, and then take it from there. Thank you.
My name is Shawnee. I'm from Leaf House, 900 Eastern Avenue, uh, Somerset, New Jersey. So, um, I'm going to be just repetitive, I guess, but I'd like to read this. Um, I, I came with this, I believe, a few months ago, but I would like Franklin Township must, they must also take steps to crack down on illicit marketplace. The products offered by the stores are heavily regulated by Cannabis Regulatory Commission.
Ma'am, um, this ordinance is not about regulating non-cannabis. This is an ordinance about the number of cannabis licenses we have. So you already said that and that was in our public portion, but that's not this port, this is only on this ordinance. So that's not this ordinance.
Talking about the safety of the.
No, this ordinance has nothing to do with the hemp products. This is strictly with regards to the number of cannabis licenses that are in the.
Understood. Okay.
That are in the township. That's the only, that's the only thing that's the subject of this and the hours of operations of them.
Understood. Okay. So if you compare to Jersey City, the Jersey City's population, it's about 290,000 people. They have about 40 licenses issued versus Somerset, about 68,000 to have 25 licenses issued. That's just ridiculous. And Jersey City's population, again, the median income over there is much higher, 60 to 80,000. Somerset is 42,000 the median income. How are they going to even afford legal cannabis? That's number one. Obviously, they're going to go to illegal shops to go and shop there because they cannot even afford that. With income $42,000 a year, who's going to even afford to be, to put in, uh, Somerset as destination place for cannabis? It does, it's, no one is going to come from South Jersey. They already have so many dispensaries. Same, same thing from North Jersey. No, no one is going to drive here. So I believe as a town, and I want to succeed. I'm the first one to be open. And you, you were all invited and thank you for coming, all of you. And I want to succeed and stay here. I want to create jobs. I, I, I also open a cultivation site and a growing facility and manufacturing facility here on David, David's Now. But right now, I'm kind of a little bit scared because I'm not even sure if you cannot support me as a dispensary for me to bring the cultivation and manufacturing, I'm a little honestly scared because I don't feel being supported. Because right now, there's so many dispensaries are being open and they're not even open, some of them. If I'm open the very first dispensary and I'm negative, imagine for other people. And it's not safe. I mean, it's not even fair to them. Uh, I, all I ask, can you guys reconsider? Because even 18 is a lot of licenses being issued. 18 is for Somerset, it's just impossible. You guys have to recalculate, do max out, but you guys will set up everyone for failure and imagine lawsuits coming in back and forth.
Ma'am, just, I just want.
Wait till she finishes.
I'm sorry. Are you done?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So there are currently 18 licenses that are either open or are being constructed and they've been granted. There are a few more that are in the pipeline that have already been granted by the state. We don't have the ability to just reduce the number of licenses. For instance, you're a licensee in the township. We don't have the ability to come and say to you, well, you should close because the other nice woman who was here has a cannabis facility and we would rather her succeed than you. So if you would like us to reduce our licenses, your license would get reduced. I don't think that's what you want. And I don't think that we have the legal authority to say, okay, well, let's put 15 of the 18 people who are currently open out of business so that three people can survive. So the reality of the world is, we have 18 licenses. There are a number of others in the pipeline. We've stopped it at that point. Now, we could, could make, could have made the number five, but we still don't have the ability to go and take your business. So what, I, I, I just want the, the public to understand what we're doing here. We're putting a cap on it, which is what we, we are doing. Um, but we don't have the business, the ability to go and close operating facilities. If we did, I, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure that if you got a call from the Township Administrators that said, hey, we're going to close your facility so that one of the other ones can do well, you'd be pretty upset about it. And by, by the way, correctly so. So the answer is that I just want to make sure that what, what, everybody understands what we're doing. We're capping where we are now. Um, and if any of them go out of business, it, they're, they're not going to get reissued unless we go below 18. So that's where, that's where the number is. I just want everybody to say. So I, I'm sorry, your time was, I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
So even if, if you guys cannot put cap, I understand. Why not just put, for example, if 18 were already given out, like other town, what they did, they gave out X amount of letters, right? Support, letter of support, but they did not, like, for example, some dispensaries, they did not even build up their.
No, the answer is, is we're way past that point. So these, these 18 already have building permits and licenses. So they're not going to, if they fail, they fail, but they, they exist. Those are existing businesses and we can't go and take them. And I'm sure that, um, I'm sure you understand that because just think about it. I mean, you have, I don't know how many licenses that you have in New Jersey, but your, your location is on 900 Eastern Avenue. There's no way that we have the ability to go in and say to you, you need to close now so that the other licenses in town. So, so the answer is, is you're asking us for something that legally we don't have the authority to do.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm not asking you to close.
Sorry, your time, time's up.
Time's up.
I apologize. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Geneva Muzan. I'm at 618 Hamilton Street. And yes, I'm open into dispensary. But the lady that just spoke, the reason I'm up here is that was not her question. She actually, you actually answered what she was talking about was putting a cap on it. Because if we continue to just open up dispensaries, where are we going to put them all? And you have so many on Hamilton Street already. And so that is a sigh of relief for me that you've decided to cap it.
That's what it is. Correct.
But that's what she was saying. She wasn't saying, you was answering a question that she hadn't even put out there. I believe that that's what she basically was saying. Besides the fact that there's illegal activity, that's what she was talking about. And what does the township will do about that? 18-year-olds should not be going to, what'd you say, gas stations and, um, smoke shops and buying, um.
That's what's not in this ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's another subject.
Yeah, that's, and that's not the subject of this. The, the only thing in this ordinance is what you just said, which was the capping of the number of licenses. That's, that's all this ordinance is.
Okay, so if we have concerns about that, that would there be an ordinance for that?
Yes. There is. That, right now, we're about to vote on the ordinance cap. That's what we're doing now. Correct. Correct.
Yes. All right. Bye.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Debbie Stewart, Two Farrington. I'm sorry, I'm out in left field with this topic, so I'm just trying to learn here. If I'm listening to them, the one lady, she wants to lower the amount, but yes, you don't want to close people down. Is there any way to word it that we'll keep the 18 and whatever's in the pipeline, whatever you legally have to do now, but then beyond a certain period of time, let's say five of them go out of business, unfortunately, or 10, now, once that happens, it's back, it's to 10 or whatever, a smaller amount. I don't know what the wording is. I don't know if it's legal.
That's essentially what we're, what we're dealing with.
Oh, well, what is it? Oh, I'm sorry.
18 is the, 18 is the magic number right now. That if places go out of business, wherever it lands, 18 is the max. Dispensaries not grow or cultivation. Dispensaries, this ordinance, if it passes, 18 is that magic number that it's capped at.
Well, I thought there were 18 now. No? There's more than 18?
There are 18 now.
So, so I, if I'm hearing this lady correctly, she would like to be lower than 18.
Right, that's what she wants.
So let's assume some of them go out. Why couldn't you, and if you think 10 after some kind of a economic study, 10 is the right number, couldn't you say going forward after this, it would be 10? I don't know. Maybe I'm not making sense, but kick it down over time.
That's what we're doing. The number we're using is 18. You're using 10.
Okay. But you're not decreasing it. You're leaving it the same.
No, so.
No, we are. We are, because there are, we, we are mayor because there are more than 18 that have been approved by the Regulatory Commission. I think the total number is 23. We've reduced it to 18.
Okay, by five. Yeah.
Correct. So.
25%.
So, so if number 23 goes out of business, there isn't going to be another number 23. The number's going to get reduced until it goes down to 18.
And at some point in time, I would assume if you find that's a bad number, you could come back and.
Correct. Exactly.
39% reduction.
Jan Brant, 22 Bryant Court. And I, I wasn't here for the cannabis either. So just a question, and, and this just sounds very familiar, um, to some processes that happened in Franklin Township. I guess when you all just, I, I, I guess, was there ever a study done as to how many cannabis dispensaries were going to be too much for the community? Because it sounds to me like the woman who was speaking was saying that there's 23 right now, and I, I, I don't know how much she's paid for her license, maybe $100,000. I'm, I'm just guessing. I, I don't know if you have that question either. But I guess if, if this was a mistake that the township ended up giving too many dispensary licenses out to people, um, I'm just seeing that like, kind of like what we've had, like with the warehouse issue, where there was too many warehouses and too much development in the community. I'm just wondering, like, to just learn from the mistakes that have been, happened in the past of having studies done before you decide on 23 dispensaries. Because it sounds like this woman is very worried about her business and, you know, that she spent a lot of money and invested in it. So I'm just wondering, was there ever a, it's, was you just given like, okay, you can have 23 and then you decided to have 23 and 23 were given out? Or was there ever a study done?
Mr. Mayor, you want me to answer that question?
Can we just wait till the? Hold, hold. Everyone, stop. I'll try to answer it. If you think that you need to add, you can answer.
Can we wait till the end and answer them all at once?
No.
Okay.
Hang on, everyone. Thank you. So the, there was no study. The mistake we made was we trusted the state. The state said you're not going to get more than six or seven. So we said, well, that's fine. So we, we didn't bother coming up with a number to limit it. Now, Mr. Dominic, if you have.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, we don't issue licenses. The state issues the license. And what the mayor was speaking about is from the very beginning, we let the market be open, but we were assured by the state that there was only going to be a few. And that's not what they did. So the council did make a mistake. They let it be open. They let the market dictate it. The state, the CRC, just decided to open it up and issue more licenses. And now the council is taking the appropriate action.
And they didn't, they didn't warn us beforehand. In fact, there, as we brought out this ordinance and people started coming out of the woodwork, there was places that had gotten a license that we weren't notified for over a year. So it, I do not think it was managed well by the state. And I can't quote the line from Animal House, but we messed up. We trusted them. Anyone else want to talk, speak?
Mr. Mayor, are we done with the, uh, public portion?
Oh, right.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Anyone? Seeing no one, I move we close public comment.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Mr. Mayor, can I just?
Sure.
Just, just in answer to one of the questions. One of the things that's, that's happened, and I just want to make sure everybody understands is only, only 36% of New Jersey municipalities allow cannabis licenses at all. So when the law passed, people rushed to get into this business and then found that they had to rush to find someplace that would allow a license. And a lot, there's a lot of towns that, that limited to one license. So I, everybody comes to the government and says, well, did you do a study to determine how many licenses that you, you would allow and you would allow in town? That's not, not my question. And I'm one of those, I'm, I'm in a lot of different municipalities, 65 different municipalities. And I've fielded hundreds of phone calls from people who had interest in doing, in, in the cannabis business. And my question to all of them is always the same is, what kind of market research have you done to determine whether or not there's a market? If you're going to build a McDonald's, McDonald's knows how many cars are going to go past and how many people are going to buy hamburgers. So the, the question is, when, 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 you know, it, it's not for the town to create a sustainable, uh, marketplace for cannabis in its municipality. That's not, we don't have the, we don't have the economic regulatory authority to do that. The state says we can issue, we can allow licenses, we allow them. But if you open a, if you, somebody used, if you open a pizza place next to another pizza place, then either you have the much better pizza or you're both going to struggle. That's what happens here. And if, if you're on a road that has 10 pizza places, you can't come to us and say, I don't understand why you allow so many pizza places. And that's, that's really, that, that's really kind of where we are now. So, so this ordinance is a reaction. It doesn't want to put anybody out of business. That's not, you know, so to the extent. That's not, you know, so to the extent we want to support small businesses, we're not looking to put anybody out of business. However, there has to at some point in time be a cap on the number of them legitimately because the number of cannabis licenses that were supposed to be spread across five hundred and sixty-four municipalities are now being spread across two hundred and nine municipalities. That's, that's the reality of, of this. That, so I, that's, I just wanted to say, just from a big picture, Mayor, that's why we're doing, that's why staff came to this conclusion, and that's why it was recommended to the council.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, may I, I just heard some numbers. I just want to make sure that everybody knows exactly the numbers and so forth. And this is the latest data actually from, uh, Vince. So, we have right now ten cannabis dispensary stores open in town. Eight proposed dispensaries have construction permits. They have not opened yet. They have not built yet. And there's also five proposed dispensaries have submitted for construction permits and have a license from, of course, the CRC, but they have not issued construction permit. So, when we're talking about eighteen, we are including that eight which have the permit. So, but right now, as we speak, Mr. Vince, correct me, we have ten that are open.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
Okay, before anyone else speaks, I'm a stickler for Robert's rules. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So, moved.
Second.
Within second, and now we can have discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's why I wanted to go, because I, sometimes we have the ability to go off the rails. The attorney, Mr. Renone, he definitely hit it on the head, exactly the five points that come out of the state of New Jersey and what we have to do to regulate. And I want to bring up something that the Township Council tried, was going to do, but it couldn't do. And that was, someone paid a lot of money for a liquor license. Don't know who they are. Paid money for a liquor license. And our ordinance for that is a thousand feet. So, when it went through, one abstained, and I voted no. Okay? Now, in realization of that, that was my, I shouldn't have, because, no, no, I should have voted no, because as Mr. Renone said, hey, if you think you got better pizza, open up. And if you can't beat the other guy, what do you want me to do? Now, we have dispensaries on Hamilton Street, and one is four doors or five doors away from the next dispensary. Okay? Now, somewhere along the line, somebody going to close, because somebody can't, uh, uh, work, I mean, it's just not going to work. So, somebody's going to fall off the bandwagon real, real quick. And then you have other dispensaries that are humongous. They're going to eat somebody up. Now, what do we say about that? Oh, well, you need to cut down the size because X, Y, Z has to live. Here's the example. How many barber shops do we have on Hamilton Street? How many barber shops in Ha, uh, I see Mr. Geneva there. She should know. There are eight million barber shops there, and everyone has a particular barber shop that they go to. So, now, what do you want me to do about them? Hey, you can only have five on Hamilton Street. Everybody else got to close. Ain't going to happen. So, through attrition, they're going to go, and we're going to get down to eighteen, nineteen, or whatever our license number is. And as far as Mr. Guy says, embrace what we have and look at it economically, well, gee, uh, sometimes you got to look at what you're bringing in and say, no. Sometimes you got to say enough is enough, and we're saying enough. Because when you look around at all the communities that surround us, we're it. You go on twenty-seven, we're it, because they're all on our side of twenty-seven. They're not on New Brunswick's side. They're not on North Brunswick's side. They're not on South Brunswick's side. They're on our side. You slip down into Princeton, you might catch one or two. Uh, there it is. It's stock before Princeton. I, I, I want you to understand something. We, we want the business, but at some particular point in time, just like liquor stores, economically, and that's why I voted no, is because why should I allow someone else to, just because they spent three hundred thousand dollars on a license, slip through the door? Because if I do it for one, I got to do it for what? The next one. Because I opened the door. So, no. If they can't survive, I'm sorry. Economics. Two warehouses on both ends of the street. They all want market share. What do they do? They all move toward the middle. Survival of the fittest. I want the whole nut. I'm a funeral home. I want everyone that dies to come to my funeral home. But I got nine funeral homes in Newark. Nine of them. So, what do you want me to do? Knock off Cotton Perry and everybody else so I can win? So, I just want you to understand that, and, you know, economically sized, sometimes you just got to say no. Sometimes you just got to say no, and unfortunately, I'm the guy that says no. Beat me up if you want to. I got broad shoulders. I've said no a couple of times. Beat me up if you want, but I'm still here. And I ain't going nowhere. I got broad shoulders. Go for it.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I was one of the ones that reached out to the staff and said, we need to put a cap limit on retail class five dispensaries coming into Franklin Township. What alarmed me was what was coming in on Hamilton Street, the, the overabundance. We are doing this to prevent market saturation, oversaturation. And I think, yes, we may be a little reactive, but we also did not know, as been said many, many times tonight, that the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, we did not know that they were going to issue all these licenses. What we're trying to do is be fair to the people that are already in the pipeline, that have their licenses, that have already been approved. And we don't want to prevent them from start, opening up a business because they were already in the pipeline. So, it's not a magic number, but we, we did some forecasting about what was in the pipeline, what's already been approved by the CRC, what we already have, and that's where that number came from. I think we're being fair to, to make sure that at least the people that are here can succeed. I know it's probably too many at this point. We may be reactive at this point, but we're, I think, we're, if we did nothing, we would probably have forty more coming in. So, that's the whole purpose of this regulation, this ordinance tonight. Some people may think it's not fair, but we need to do what we need to do to make the quality of life here in Franklin Township the best that it can be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so originally, I wasn't supportive of the cap, but I was very pleased that the colleague, my colleagues agreed to look at this. If there is more of a demand that seems sustainable, and also like a distribution that could make sense to, to make sure we're maximizing our retail spaces and also providing business opportunities? Because I think, as the attorney said, you know, we don't, there's a lot of things we don't have limits on, you know, pharmacies or other regulated industries like hair salons where people need licenses, or pest companies. But I was very much persuaded by that sort of bill of goods where we really didn't think this many would be approved. And in fact, I went to my community in Kingston and said, you know, we, we are approving, basically, not approving, but we are agreeing that everyone who is applying, that they're allowed in the zone. We had no vetting process for anyone. We didn't know if they had enough financing. We didn't set up committees to, you know, rank the order of what projects were, you know, more in line with something that we came up with. We let the free market sort of decide. I think the big thing here was that the state wasn't going to issue very many. And, you know, eighteen, I think is a very reasonable number. And of course, there will be more than eighteen, twenty-three that will be able to be built and until, and if any of those are not successful, then other ones would open up. If those are successful and the market needs more, I, I hope the council will consider that. But, you know, I think it's good for the folks who exist currently because there is a cap, and you know that you're going to have some market share. And it's also, you know, forward-looking to be inclusive. And in this moment, I'm supportive of that for all the reasons folks have described. So, I appreciate everyone's, you know, listening and sort of working together, listening to the community and the business owners as well. And I wish everyone great success in, in your time in Franklin. And I, I believe we are very supportive and have been very supportive, many ribbon cuttings, and many personal visits to cannabis dispensaries as well to sort of check out what's going on there, particularly in my ward. So, you know, thank you for choosing Franklin. We continue to be a wonderful place to do business, and we look forward to the new shops opening up, but with this cap of eighteen into the foreseeable future, if it passes.
The other council member.
Just, uh, just want to point out, Mayor, that, you know, again, I think we're all getting kind of very similar language here and saying that we're, most of us are supportive of this. I think eighteen is the number. I think we weren't ready to see such a huge increase over time. I think it happened so fast, and that's why we're trying to put a cap on it and kind of limit the number down. So, we are a business-friendly town. I understand the challenges. I've spoken to many of you guys on, on the challenges that have happened, and, you know, I understand, and I think that's why we're taking this decision to put that cap on, you know. So, definitely could have been more. I think it's just a flush of licenses that are being provided by the state, and as Mayor and the team mentioned, it's something that we do not provide. It's given by the state. So, exactly to what Deputy Mayor has provided, I think that, you know, we are here to support, be supportive to you guys. You know, putting a cap on it right now just helps limit the dispensaries, because I think that's just been a, a big number, especially in Hamilton Street. So, just want to say I am supportive of this.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I was one of the ones that attended your inauguration, so I'm very unhappy to hear that your business is not doing so well. But the, the, the number, the cap number, while it may sound subjective, it is not. So, we looked at, for example, the number of liquor licenses. You know, that's about around twenty in town. So, we didn't arbitrarily decide, okay, eighteen is the number. It was so happened that we had eighteen at the time when we considered this ordinance. So, there was some discussion, some deliberation that we have had in fixing this number. Again, like the mayor said, we are not going to, of the twenty-three that's coming in, if some of them would not survive, we are not going to let them refill that slot. So, I think that's a good thing. Maybe eighteen is too high. It's too low. We don't know. We will, we will know in due course, and then we will make more decisions on that. Thank you, Mayor.
I have one question. The cultivation licenses, is it part of the eighteen or separate from the eighteen?
Separate.
Separate.
Yeah. Retail.
Retail. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else don't feel obligated? So, just for my short input, the use of the word bailout, I have issue with. Bailout brings to mind government spending billions of dollars to bail out things after the, the Great Recession. That's not what we're doing. That's not my motivation. It's not costing the town anything. And just, it was brought out at the last meeting, this is likely to bring in, the cannabis shops, yes, we were giddy to get the income from the taxes. It looks like it'll be around four hundred thousand dollars a year. That's one percent of the amount that we raise in taxes, so that can be used to hold down taxes by one percent in the future. I think we've all discussed this. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Dominic? Unless someone else is dying to speak. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pataznik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes. Okay. Ordinance on introduction and first reading, ordinance forty-four fifty-one dash twenty-four, ordinance to amend the code of the township Franklin County, Somerset State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter three twenty-five, special events. Foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law, and public hearing, and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council will be held on Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P. M. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Second.
Within seconded. The big item in this is what should be done with a private party at someone's house that has over a hundred people attending? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think I'd like to make some comments. My personal view is that what we need to do is, I mean, first of all, I, I understand the main reason behind this, which is to make sure that people stay safe, there's no traffic issue, parking issues, and in an emergency, the township vehicle can reach out. But I'm not hundred percent sure that we need to have a permit for the citizens of this township to go through the application and all the other stuff that is going to come with this to just have a personal party. What I believe is needed, some guidance to be provided to the community members, that if you're going to have a large party, township is here to help, to guide you, some of the things you can do and you can't do. And then we can inform the public in, in many ways that we have, so they know what are the, the good ways to have their special events. And I mean, personally speaking, I had three special events in my property when my daughters were getting married, and we had over a hundred. We informed our neighbors that we're going to have a party, and everybody knew that we're going to have a party, and then we asked them if it's okay to park in front of their houses, the street was wide enough, and we didn't violate anything. But having another permit, an application, and waiting for somebody to answer in the township, and, and even some of the details that they ask and see where you're going to be put in the benches and so forth, I believe is just too much work. So, I'd like to just propose that we have a guidance and let the community members to go with it.
Uh, Mayor, I, I'm not sure, because I didn't hear the word motion, but I'm, I believe Councilman Karazi is looking to change a component of it. I'm not sure if he want to put it in the, in a motion to amend.
Well, why don't we have a little more discussion? Does anyone else have anything else to add?
Well, I had one thing separate, and I do, in general, think there's ways to do without a mandatory permitting process. But one thing I wanted to address, I don't have the printed copy. I've read it, and I just saw it before, but there's a section there, separate from the private party thing, just in general for permits, for special events, that the applicant that's applying for a permit would be notified, it used, well, presently says fifteen days if for some reason the permit was not being issued. I seen the new one, it's seven. I, because I think- I, because I think seven's a little bit tight of a window if someone's having a big event, and for some justifiable reason, they're told they can't, and they have to go through the cancellation process. I just think, given them at least ten days, would be a more practical, fair number. And if there's staff information, or clerk has anything to add that says that would be impossible, I'd be open to hearing it. But I think fourteen down to seven is a little too dramatic. So I would motion that that gets moved to ten. That's the days that someone is told if for some reason they cannot proceed.
So we have a motion. I'm obligated to ask for a second. This is on the third page. It's three twenty-five dash five, under A, goes from fifteen to seven. He's adding, asking to strike that and leave it at fifteen.
No, I was asking to.
Ten, right.
My understanding is the fifteen, that would be a little too long of a window.
You wanted to go to ten.
Well, that was my idea. I mean, I'm open to tweaking it, but I thought ten was a practical number.
We have a second on ten. There's no second, the motion dies. Anyone else? Or did you have more?
For now, I'm good.
Anyone else?
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So as I understand, the source of this ordinance was really the traffic issues on the streets because of large gathering. So my opinion is, similar to Councilman Karazi, it seems like it's not placed at the right, in the right frame. In other words, you know, I'm not too keen on over-regulating a private party in the house. While the problem, I get it. It's a traffic issue that a street may not be able to hold so many cars and a party. So I think that's not what this is, it's reflected in this ordinance. And to ask, to impose a permit burden on residents for a party, how do we know that there are going to be, that there are a hundred people? Let's say somebody has a ninety-eight person party, they're exempt from this rule, yet they're going to have the same number of cars as a hundred person party. So I think this ordinance is misplaced. I'm not too thrilled about it. Yes, I understand that we have to provide a safe parking environment for gatherings, private gatherings. I think that can be done maybe on a more, on a guidance basis, like Councilman Karazi suggested. I'm not too keen on this particular ordinance as it is written.
Madam Clerk, you, I know you have feelings about this.
No? It's up to you guys. You guys set policy.
I have one, just sort of thing, why I think it's important, and I've said this before, that noise ordinance, which we just, I think, approved, or no?
Not yet.
Not yet. That's next. I think we're doing it in the wrong order. But anyway, the noise ordinance that we're going to maybe approve, possibly, allows noise up to ten o'clock, which means, without a registration and some other rule set for a registration, folks have to stop whatever they're doing at ten o'clock, which I feel like in the summer particularly is unreasonable. You know, people should be able to have events till, I think eleven is reasonable, particularly on a weekend of Friday or Saturday. So I like the idea of registering. And with that, maybe there's a few things that you get, like a checklist, like the Councilman Karazi mentions, for guidance. And the ability then to stay active with your party till, let's say, eleven o'clock at night instead of the noise ordinance, which is ten. So, you know, what goes with that? If there are any other sort of caveats or strings or requirements around other things that folks think would make the event more smooth, if it's parking-related or other, then I think it makes sense to consider those. I don't feel like it's a government overreach to say, if you're going to have a hundred people at your house and you want to go later than the noise ordinance, please take a moment to fill out a form in advance so that you know that everything's going to be above board and you're not going to have your wedding for your child shut down somehow because of some, something. Like, I think it actually helps clear the way for folks to have peace of mind, which was described by staff, when people are calling and wondering, why is there no process? How can I be sure? There is stress related to that. And as someone who likes to host parties, you know, I feel for that sort of situation. I think some of the things that were discussed previously did seem a lot like, wow, that's a lot, right? For a homeowner to go through, I think, a scale drawing. You know, next they'll be asking for architectural satellite drawings and three D models to bring in or something, which might be fun, but really doesn't get to the point, right? Like, nothing's broken particularly now, but can we approve it so people have both peace of mind and safety, but also a benefit, like longer hours to have an event, which are reasonable? So I would recommend that we send this back to committee to just further have discussions. But before we, I'll make a motion to do that, I just want to make sure other folks have a chance to share whatever concerns they might have. Because the committee is only made up of some people. And that means, you know, let's say it goes back to administration, it's me, myself, the mayor, Kimberly, and Charles. So I guess anyone else who's not on that committee that wants to share anything that we can consider, maybe come back with a revised version that addresses some of the concern so folks can feel comfortable with it. You know, considering that they would get an added benefit with the registration. You can even make it optional or what have you, we can come back.
So unless someone is compelled to talk more about it right now.
So I guess it's back to the sixty-five D. V. at the property line.
That's, that's, that's a different ordinance. So you could make that a motion to table until it's gone to committee?
A move that we send it to the administration committee for further consideration, given the comments expressed here tonight in the previous meetings.
I second that.
So moved and seconded, once something is offered to table, the only discussion can be when you are tabling it to, not the specifics of the ordinance? So does anyone want to change when we are going to table it to? Currently, it's until it's gone back to committee.
So it's indefinite, Mayor?
It's indefinite until it's gone back to committee.
Okay. I just, is that process then would cover like the question that I brought up that I think people might not have understood?
We're just not putting a deadline on this.
Yeah, we're not saying buy.
No, that's fine, that's, I think.
Anything in the ordinance could be discussed.
Can be reviewed. I just ask that the committee let council.
So we can only discuss?
What?
What's time? Time.
Well, that, okay, as part of the time.
You can discuss that offline.
Well, just that the rest of the council, in a timely manner, if we're talking about time, get whatever your guys' ideas and alternate possibilities are.
Any other discussion on when to table it to? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
We're voting on the motion to table.
Table. Okay.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Making of the sausage. Ordinance forty-four fifty-two dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter one sixty-nine, nuisance and repeal, Chapter one sixty-seven, noise in its entirety. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication accordance with law, and public hearing, and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P. M. in the Council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
I'll second.
Within seconded. So this is for the general public, moving, getting rid of the noise ordinance, and, but making noise, treating it as a nuisance. And that gives us some flexibility in that it doesn't have to be proved by DCA? Or DDP? DDP. And it's also an easier way to prevent noise. It doesn't require a meter, it doesn't require training. It's an easier, the noise ordinance was broken, and this is a way of fixing it. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm, okay. I had just two questions. One about the distance of that two hundred feet that is in there, about it being the adjoining, I don't want to call it residence, but I guess adjoining house, adjoining structure, as opposed to two hundred feet. The other thing that, and I think some other council people have ideas in that, with that topic, also I'd like to hear from, but the other thing, I know when this came up two weeks ago, I was concerned about making sure we had an enforcement structure. And I saw the attorney put in fines. And from what I understand, if I'm interpreting him right, the first offense is five hundred, and subsequent offenses are a thousand. So I just had a couple of technical questions. I don't have a problem with that structure. But does that allow, at the judge's discretion, or whoever it is that you'll tell me has the authority on a first offense, to not give them the five hundred dollar? Or is that mandatory, that your first offense, if you're in violation, you will pay five hundred?
It's a minimum. So it gives the judge the discretion to give them more than that, but not less than it.
Okay. Not trying to rewrite it tonight, but when we were discussing, I forget, as a committee or just, I think with another council member, we were talking about if discretion, we trust people who enforce this in town, that are the first offense, if that address has not had any prior complaints, that we wanted, we were open to them, again, at discretion of our experts, to be given a written documented warning of sorts. I don't want to be too lenient, but sometimes that discretion is, can be applied in a fair way. So I wanted to throw that out there. And then I'm fine with the five hundred and thousand dollar intervals for subsequent offenses. If there is a rental, if the property that gets a violation is a rental, does the violation go to the owner, agent of record? Or does it go to the person at the house at the time our expert would find them in violation? And I'm wondering, since we have a good amount of rentals in town, if, like, a new tenant a year or two later would be considered a first offender or a second offender? Not trying to find trouble with this. I just want to be clear because how it would apply to the reality of the landscape of our town. So if you could address.
These are not property offenses, these are personal offenses.
So they would go to the person at the house, not to a owner or landlord?
Correct. So if you buy a house from somebody who was particularly noisy, you're not at risk because they were fined before.
So, I'm sorry, so if somebody got a fine, moved out, a new tenant comes in, would that new person be considered a first offender?
He's a person.
Okay. Now, that sounds logical, I just want to make sure.
At the same point, if you were a person who did this at multiple locations in town, it would follow you. It would follow.
So it's, so the way you're describing it's the most fairly applicable because it's holding who's responsible, and if you're a habitual offender, or if you're not, and you're a new person at that. Okay, that's exactly how I'd like it to be. So I'm satisfied with those answers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Absolutely.
I just want to, the mayor said that it was important to do this ordinance because it helped us fix the noise ordinance. And most particularly, it helps us fix that provision of the noise ordinance that we passed specifically to regulate noise at warehouses. So I want to be clear that that was one of my driving forces in recommending to the township manager and then to the council that we reconstruct the ordinance in this way. It is a important tool that we need to continue. And I just wanted to, I didn't want that to get lost. And that's the portions of one sixty-nine dash nineteen that we worked pretty long and hard on about eighteen months ago. And I want to, I want to, I want to make sure that that's an important part of this. Of course, there's a pending legal challenge to that provision in the noise ordinance.
I would like to move an amendment based on what Councilman Vasanella had said on page six. I think it says one six nine dash eighteen, letter A, to, it currently reads, the last sentence, "The operation of such machine or device so that it is clearly audible at a distance of two hundred feet from the building which it's located", to instead read, "The operation of such a machine or device so that is clearly audible at a neighboring residence, if accessible, comma, or at a distance of two hundred feet from the property line in which it is located." So basically, that would mean if I'm in a home, and the neighboring home, the police officer could go there, and they could hear the noise, it's clearly audible at the neighboring house, this is after ten P. M., that would be a violation. And if you're in an area where it's like a larger lot, it has to be two hundred feet from the property line to nowhere, because there's not a house there that you can go to. Or if it's in an inaccessible area, for example, it's a gated home and no one's home, the police aren't going to scale the gate to go there and go to the front door, it would be the two hundred foot distance from the property line from where the sound has started. So this way, you know, that, it covers a lot of the different types of things that are in the town. The two hundred feet itself in a more densely packed suburban area versus a more, like, spacious suburban area. You know, it didn't really fit. So in this way, that would be the amendment. So I can read it again. The motion is to basically insert the words after clearly audible, a neighboring residence, if accessible, comma, or, keep at a distance of two hundred feet from the insert property line of, and then it continues, the building in which it is located.
I'm concerned that it makes it more confusing.
Yeah, it definitely makes more confused.
And I'm concerned because it, at one point, makes the distance shorter, and at another point, makes it larger.
We didn't discuss it, yeah, we didn't even have a second on it. So we don't have to discuss if there's no second.
Well, you and I, it's just, it's just two guys talking about it.
Did you have recommendation on rewording the motion?
No, I'm not, I'm sorry.
So I'm confused by that. So if the offending, the offending property was this table, you're saying one is two hundred feet beyond the table?
No, like, I'll give an example. My first house in town was on Home Street, a twenty-five foot lot by a hundred foot deep, right? I'm in my, I'm making noise in my yard, somebody calls and complains. You go to the next house, if you can hear it, it's a violation. Okay? After ten o'clock. After ten o'clock. If you're in the area where I live now, the same thing happens. I'm in my yard, I'm making music, somebody calls and complains, okay? You either go to the neighbor, to their house, if you hear it, it's a violation. If the neighbor's house has a big fence around it and fiery dragons, the police officer can't access that house to judge at the residence if it's audible. They would go to the property line, and then they would go two hundred feet and see if it's audible. It's the same thing as saying two hundred feet if it's audible. It just adds the, you can go to the neighboring house, and if it's not audible, then it's a violation. So it's really for more densely packed areas.
Why shouldn't it be from the complainant's house? So Carl's playing music too loud, and I complain. You're not complaining, Jim's not complaining. So why just from my property line?
And I think that I agree with Mayor.
I'm trying to address the densely populated areas.
But here's the part that I don't understand. So I think that under the language that you gave us, so I'm just a guy, and I'm walking down the street, there's loud music being played in the house. I live six blocks away, I'm going for a walk. I call the police. I call the police. And the police have to go to the, not that house, but the neighbor of that house to determine whether or not-
Or get out a tape measure.
Even though that person hasn't complained.
Well, the way it is now, the police have to get a tape measure, find the radio, and then run the tape measure from the radio 200 feet.
No, they don't need a tape measure.
They have access to the GIS map of the township, they just check and see and they can tell.
Okay, or something, they'd have to go 200 feet.
And by the way, that, the 200 feet part of it might be something that somebody might do in a court, but the police have available on their computer in their unit to be able to tell how big the lots are and-
So in this neighborhood of my first house, you would have passed four houses. So House Two, House Three would hear it and House Four wouldn't, it wouldn't be a violation. But House Two and House Three would be like, oh my God, it's so loud.
And so here's, and so here's, if I can, mayor, so here's where I agree, that's why the first part of it, I agreed with you. It's the second part of it that made it confusing for me. If, if you're going to change it that it, you can't, that you hear it at the next house, that's a policy decision and, by the way, maybe not a bad one. It's all of the other language, I think, made that confusing. That, I think, made sense.
Okay. Well, I'm just using what's there.
So change it at, if it's, you know, if it can be held, you know, the-
The property line of the offender?
Just say that the dwelling of any neighbor.
It can be clearly audible.
Okay, I withdraw my amendment and I'll say, clearly audible, insert, excuse me, clearly audible at, or-
Why don't we let the attorney advise us?
I'm thinking that may be what you want to say, clearly audible as a distance of 200 feet or at the next residential property.
That's what I said, I just said it in the opposite order.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I did the exact same thing in the other order.
I don't want to, I don't know if you want to do property line, I think you want to do, I think you want to do dwelling.
That's what we were saying, but you just mentioned property.
So if I have a big property and I'm way out, away from my house and I can hear the noise, then that's-
You're a violation on your own property.
No, no, no. My neighbor lives 800 feet from me, but my property goes right up near his house. If I wanted to be sitting out on my property near his house but on my property and it's too loud, that's okay because I'm not at my dwelling?
Audible at the dwelling.
Can I, can I ask a question? I've asked a question, I'm waiting for an answer.
So I think what I was, what I was saying is at the dwelling. If your neighbor could hear it at their house from where you are, then that's an offense.
So, and I think that by doing what the councilman and I just suggested though in a different order, that there's two standards. It's at the next dwelling or 200 feet.
Can I, can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
Because we're sitting here going back and forth and I wouldn't vote for anything because it's muddled now. And the amendment would be muddled. So I would suggest we take this back and rehash it, get a sound engineer in here like Arnie Schmidt or somebody who does it, who did it for Union, I believe. Because if you're telling me, if you hear it at my property line and it goes over to yours, I'm screwed, 200 feet.
After 10:00.
They're still screwed because they're still going to hear it.
It's the whole point of the ordinance.
I don't care about that, man. Throw this back and let's get this right. Throw it back.
Councilman, this is not, and once again, I'm going to say it again, it's important that we get this ordinance introduced for the reasons that I said before and I don't want to have to-
Go for it.
And I think that, I understand, because I had the same question about whether it made it more confusing. We picked 200 feet because remember, this is a nuisance ordinance. So now we're talking about sounds that are loud enough that you can hear them 200 feet away after 10:00 are deemed as a matter of this ordinance to be a nuisance. So while we can make that less, it is, it is also a clearly identifiable distance that a police officer could understand. And it's not, I think that that's, I think that's part of it. So, you know, my question is, if you're playing music loud enough in your house that they can hear it in the house next door, I don't, I don't, I mean, you can make, you can make it 100 feet and maybe that makes it easier.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Mr. Renon, we need to put this in place tonight.
I would like to get it introduced.
Okay.
But I want to get it right.
Yeah, I understand you want to get it right, but we need to put it in there so that warehouses, like you were saying, it stops all that noise and it moves out and stops some of the noise in the street, it addresses some of those noise issues everyone else had. I'm for you. But I just want to make sure, and you can't guarantee nothing, but I'm gonna go with you on this.
So I think that, I think that by reading the entire paragraph, I think I've solved this problem.
Okay, I'm with you.
So, the paragraph says it's unlawful to make or continue to make a noise that disturbs the peace, quiet, and comfort of neighboring inhabitants or the public. That's what the violation is. The sentence we're all playing with is, "The operation of such machine or device so it is clearly audible at a distance of 200 feet from the building in which it is located or outdoor space in which it is operated between the hours of 10 and 8 shall be prima facie evidence of the violation of this section." So what that means is, if the police officer goes out and he goes 200 feet away and he can hear it, it's, it's a non-rebuttable presumption that you're guilty. If it's less than that, then it is the neighbor coming or the police officer coming and the neighbor coming and saying they were, I had this at one of my houses, karaoke singing next door, it's 1:00 in the morning, I can hear it in my bedroom, I, and it's clearly audible and it's disturbing the peace. So I think that we're playing with the, what's the bright line? And that bright line is one that a police officer doesn't have any trouble understanding by going 200 feet away and saying, I, it is what it is. So I actually think, what I'm saying is, I think it's okay because I think it does all the things that you're worried about because it covers your closely packed neighborhood and it covers bigger things too. And I just want to make sure that we understand what those two, those two different sentences.
But the 200 feet doesn't cover a closely packed neighborhood?
Sure it does, because the, remember, the 200 feet is only, it's the prima facie case of it. You still can't operate it between those hours in such a manner as to disturb the peace, quiet, and comfort of neighboring inhabitants.
Can you find a way to work in audible from the neighboring dwelling?
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to do before.
Oh yeah, so, such a matter, yeah, and where I would put it is it, reduction of sound in such a manner to be audible from a neighboring dwelling, in such a manner, in such, to be audible, reducing sound, audible, I think that's where I would insert it in that sentence, in such a manner as to describe. So audible, I can put it there.
At a neighboring dwelling or a distance of 200 feet, whichever is shorter?
No, see, once again, you're using 200 feet like that's, that's what it is. The violation isn't within 200 feet. It's a nuisance ordinance, it's not a sound ordinance, it's a nuisance ordinance.
So let's drop the 200 feet.
So-
You want prima facie to be in there?
Yeah, I want a prima facie to be in there because it gives the police the ability to, but, but it still doesn't preclude other violations. That's the point of it.
So can we add the neighboring dwelling?
Sure.
And/or, or rather, 200 feet? In this way, it covers both? I think that's what I was trying to get at and maybe I didn't do it well, but if we get to that same place, I think it covers all of our community.
Say the sentence, Mr. Renon.
We, so I think, is it, is it unlawful or a person to make or continue or cause to make or continue to play? Such a matter as disturb the peace, comfort, and happiness, and I think it has neighboring inhabitants in it already, that's my point. I think that's already in there.
But in a prima facie sentence.
So in the prima facie sentence, it would be the operation of such a machine or device so it is clearly audible.
That would be where you put neighboring dwelling?
Well, can I, can I tell you, I think that maybe it's just that simple. Clearly audible from a neighboring dwelling or at a distance of 200 feet.
Fine.
Clearly audible, got that, Mary? Anne Marie? Clearly audible from a neighboring dwelling or at a distance, so now, and then you add the 10:00 PM in it. So if you can hear it from a neighboring dwelling between 10:00 and 8:00 in the morning, then it's a violation.
I will move-
It's a prima facie.
Mr. Renon's, I will move Mr. Renon's amendment.
No, Mr. Wright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second, now, Mr. Wright.
I, one of the reasons why I think Mr. Renon is going this way and why we're going to beat the other one, the other one didn't have any teeth in it. It hadn't any enforcement in it. The police could come by and say, turn it down, and then soon as they leave, you could turn it up.
Right.
So one of the things that we did was, let's put a little teeth in the ordinance to say, hey, the next time I come out to your crib, I got something in my back pocket that you don't want me to have, and that's a ticket.
Yep.
So, yeah, I understand the way we were going with that. And yes, I understand we want to put some teeth into this thing. So again, sometimes you got to swallow that pill and keep it moving. This is one of the times that I'm going to go with you on this one because, okay, with the differences you put in, I'm with you. But again, it's got teeth and that's what I want.
Any other discussion on this amendment?
I just wanted to make sure, it says televisions, radios, instruments, whatever, do we need to put anything, God forbid someone's using some other type of noise-making machinery?
Anything on this amendment?
Well, this, this section is where this would be, so I want to make-
That would be an additional amendment.
Fair enough, mayor. No, I think it's a great amendment, I second it, and my interpretation is it's the neighboring dwelling. If there's an issue, that gives-
It says or other machine or device.
Okay, so any other-
Reproducing or reproducing.
Oh, I was going to wait till the mayor would get past that.
Mr. Renon, we're talking about this amendment, not-
Yes, no, this, I know, thank you, Lou.
I think this is a great amendment, but I do have a question for the attorney.
So we're all, we're all good, Lou, this means that if neighboring house hears it or 200 feet, the cop could-
It's my iPhone, it is.
Could act on either one.
Correct.
So I have a question about my amendment.
Thank you.
Because you wrote it. So my house, where I am now, my property is more than 200 feet.
Right.
So hypothetically, if I had a radio at the back of my lot and there's no one behind me, it's open space.
Right.
And no one could hear in any direction, 200, or whatever, and 200 feet on my property, would it be prima facie evidence for me to be in violation on my own property at 200 feet from that sound device?
No, from the building or, it's 200 feet from the outdoor space where it's located. So the answer is no, it would have to be outside of your, it would be 200 feet from your property if it's outside.
That's why I added the words property line. I was just thinking about my house currently, so if, it would still be on my property but 200 feet from the source, I think I'd be in violation if my radio is-
Yes, except that, except that, remember, once again, we're talking about the second sentence. The first sentence is that it is, it is done and it is disturbing somebody's peace and quiet. So if there's nobody, so this is a, we could put the, if, you know, the tree in the woods kind of deal.
I just wanted-
There's nobody there to hear it and nobody there to be annoyed.
Yeah, you're going to call the cops on yourself.
This, look, if this is, if you're talking about now inter-family noise complaints, I can't help you.
Okay. Any other, any other issues on this amendment?
No.
Okay. So we're going to vote on this amendment only, not on the whole piece, but on this amendment. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Okay. Anyone else?
I make a motion to approve, introduce the ordinance.
We already have that.
We already have that. Hang on, guys, we already have that. I have another amendment. I think 500 on a first offense is kind of steep.
Well, that goes back to what I asked the attorney, if we were allowed, does this give the discretion? Because I agree, mayor.
So I think it's kind of steep. There is some discretion, the officer has that discretion, always has discretion in these things. So I'm saying we go 250 for first, 500 for second, 1,000 for third and thereafter.
I would, are you making a motion?
I second.
That is a motion, and we have a second.
Who's going to second it, but I-
Okay. Any other discussion? Don't feel obligated on this change.
Mayor, I just wanted to, the violation, the general violation of penalty, I just wanted to let you know, the general violation of penalty that we have has a minimum of $100 fine for the first offense. I just wanted you to know.
So you're suggesting 100 instead of 250?
Yeah.
What I'm suggesting is that if you, if almost every section of our code says that we use the general penalty that's contained in Article 1, Section 3, my suggestion is just continue to do that.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, if you look at the ordinance, I say that, and I say, except that the minimum fine is $500. So if you just take that language-
How high can we go?
You can only go to two, the-
Like on the 1,000, can we make it? Like if we're going to start lower?
2,000.
Then we got to like make up on the other end. Because people who are repeat offenders, you know, we have to make it so that people can enjoy their homes and, so if the first one doesn't get them to stop and if it's low, $100, you know, is just like a bottle of vodka and maybe some mixers.
The maximum penalty is $2,000.
And some mixers.
The max is 2,000.
So I would say that if we go lower, we should go higher then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I just say something? Okay. My understanding is that this is not only for the resident, but also is for businesses. Is that true? This noise ordinance?
It's for anybody making a nuisance.
Okay. So for businesses, $100 is nothing, for residents, $100 is $100. So I would suggest that we put for residents who are violating, that the first, if it's possible, if not, at least have something smaller so suddenly our residents, they're having a party and then they have to give another $250 fine because they didn't know. So the first offense should be low and then we can increase it afterward.
Is that legal? I don't think that's legal.
No.
No, no, for residents, I'm talking about for everybody.
Differentiate.
You can't differentiate, I believe the attorney's-
I said don't differentiate now, just have it low for everybody, including businesses, but increase it later.
So what numbers would you use?
I would suggest start with 100.
So if we start with 100, can we do 100, then 750, then 2,000?
Well, yeah, I mean, you could put all of that in. Once again, the current, the current, you know, general penalty is $100 minimum fine for the first and for, and thereafter, it's set by the judge.
I think we should stick with, what was, what did you move? You did?
I said 250, 500, and 1,000. But we could do 100, 100, 500, and 1,000.
100, 500, and 1,000, is that a formal motion?
Yeah.
I would, I made the motion, I would accept that change.
I'll make a motion to-
Mr. Vasanella, let me run the meeting.
I'll accept the change.
Motioner and the second has made, have accepted the change. So that is now the motion, 100, 500, 1,000. Any other comments on that motion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
I thought it should also be up to the discretion of the judge.
Is that language in there?
These are minimums.
Okay.
Wait, we're in the middle of a vote.
Okay, yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
I have another very minor amendment on 169-19B. I believe the third line from the bottom of the, or at least on my printout, it's property or within 250 feet of a residential property line, I think the word or when operating on a commercial or industrial property. I think that word or should be placed in there. Doesn't make sense without it.
Can you say that again? Can you say that again?
After the words residential property line or.
No, that's not what, it's, it's or within 200 feet of a residential property line when operated on a commercial or industrial property. So that, so if you're operating the machine or, or an industrial property, it's within 200 feet of the residential property line.
Shall not be operated on a residential property or within 200 feet of a residential property when operated on, oh, I get it, yes.
I get it.
You're right, yeah.
Yeah, that is right.
Yeah, okay, I withdraw my motion. Any other motions? Any other amendments? Okay, so we will now vote on the amended ordinance.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Well, that was easy.
You know, Bill Clinton says, better to get it right than right away.
Okay, noise, oh, we're on to the consent agenda. Oh, boy. Never been happier to be there. The items A through K has listed, oh, they crack me up. The items A through K is listed on the consent agenda portion of this meeting are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent?
Some will move.
Second.
Move in second. And any discussion on the consent agenda? Anyone like to pull anything, discuss anything? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
We have two motions to be voted on separately, Resolution 243368, issuance of a special event permit, oh, boy, bleachers dispensary fear factor track trunk or treat car show Sunday, October 27th. I don't know, two, two.
That's an error.
What's it, 2:00 to 6, no.
6:00 PM to 10:00.
6:00 to 10:00 PM, 11:65 Route 27 Somerset. Do we have a motion on that item?
So moved.
Second.
Then seconded, all in favor, say, I'm sorry, we have to vote. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.